Especially males.
Yeah.
Can I have your attention, please? If you are here and would like to speak on the conditional use zoning in Great Sky, then you will need to speak at the public hearing, you'll need to sign up over here specifically for that, okay? If you, and if you want to speak on that, you should speak on that subject at that public hearing and not for the public input period, okay? That's entirely different animal there, okay? So if you haven't already done that, you have to fill out a form saying something to the effect of whether or not you've given the council member donations, campaign donations and so forth. So hopefully, if there's a lot of people, there will be time constricted, so if there's a lot of people, maybe you have a spokesman or two or three people don't really want to repeat the same thing for a long time. So, but anyway, just want to let you know that before we begin the meeting. Okay, it is six o'clock, so we will call the Canton City Council meeting to order. This is June 6th, 2019. If you would please, I want you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. The chief will present our colors, after which, I think it is appropriate that we have a moment of silence in lieu of our invocation, which we normally have in memory of D-Day some seventy-five years ago today. So I think that's very appropriate. So if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please honor a moment of silence in memory of D-Day, some June 6th, 1944, seventy-five years ago, and in honor of those who fought and died for our freedom. Okay, Mr. Patton, I believe, has an announcement before we do our first public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, councilmember. Thank you for this. I did want to announce the council members, all in the press. Canton Planning Commission meeting, which has been scheduled for Monday, June 17th, 2019, has been canceled. Two cases that were on the agenda for public hearing, case CUP 1904-002 at 201 Hospital Road, case Z1904-001, also 201 Hospital Road, this is the proposed apartment development. I have my request to the Department of Cases to carry it forward to July, so the Planning Commission will have a work session meeting on those two cases on Tuesday, July 2nd, and then the public hearing on those two cases will be on Monday, July 5th.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. All right, next item is consideration to approve our agenda. I would like to add an executive session for litigation and real estate to that. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Questions are pre-vezz amended.
Second motion.
Mr. Grant made the motion to approve the agenda with the amendment. Mr. Goodwin seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. All right now, we will have a public hearing regarding the amendment to Development Code, Chapter 107, Resource Management, to add a new section, 107.13.00, dealing with slope protection. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm gonna let Bethany Watson do this presentation. She worked extremely hard in putting together a small PowerPoint. We have presented these proposed regulation amendments to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of these amendments, and I'll turn it over to Bethany.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. So as many of you are aware, the last couple of years, we've had a lot of problems with slope failure throughout the city. The heavy amounts of rain this past winter have really highlighted these problems for us, and I will say, as development engineer, one of the main complaints I receive is that after the certificate of occupancy is issued, the slopes are hard to maintain, and they're failing, erosion is happening, and how can the city help? Unfortunately, after a certificate of occupancy is issued, there's not much the city can do. And so, there are things that we can do to make sure that we're putting more strict regulations on these slopes, so that these problems aren't happening. So first, slope ratio is, for development purposes, often described as a ratio, such as two to one, three to one, four to one. This basically means for every two units of horizontal distance, it's one unit of vertical elevation. So what does our current ordinance state? There's a little bit of language in the hillside and ridge line protection, but this is only applicable for slopes that are before development, twenty-five percent grade. And then, in soil erosion and sedimentation pollution control, the only verbiage states, best management practices, including sound conservation and engineering practices to prevent and minimize erosion and resultant sedimentation. As you can see, that's extremely vague, and does not protect the homeowner going forward after CO. So then, and also, in that same chapter, we have a section on mass grading and clearing, which only deals with projects that are over five acres. And then, the verbiage states, the faces of all slopes shall be prepared and maintained to control erosion. Once again, very vague, and this allows the developers to do the bare minimum. In the long run, the bare minimum doesn't work. So why the change? Why do we care if a slope erodes? So first off, eroding slopes cause hazards, unstable ground, safety issues, trip hazards, sinkholes, you name it. And then also, it damages property, not only the property owners, but the downstream property owners. So sedimentation goes down the slope, it can run into fences or people's houses into streams that are not on the existing property owner, property. It also can eventually cause structural damage, and for the first time this year since I've been here, we did see some structural integrity because of a slope failure. And then, it also causes water pollution from the sediment getting into the streams, but also, the ground cover and grassing helps to filter the pollutants that are in, on the ground. So here's a couple of examples of what you can see. It's kind of hard to see in these pictures, but at the top of the slope, it started to fail, and then, on the walkable surface, up to the top, you have very soft ground and holes that are beginning to happen. And this is actually the house where we did have some structural integrity issues with the deck that's on the other side of the home. And then here is an example of where a builder has placed the thin type matting on top of an erosion issue, and it's obviously not working. And then, this is another problem. This is a slope that is already, was already, not CO'd, but has been turned over to the homeowners association, and this slope has failed. And then another example of where that thin matting was placed on a slope, and it did not hold. So the proposed changes, here's a couple of highlights. It will affect slopes that are steeper than four to one. Slopes that are steeper than three to one will now require a revegetation plan to be submitted with the site plan that will include heavy, some sort of heavy-duty matting, such as jute or coconut, and then additional vegetation as well. And then, slopes that are over twenty feet in vertical height will require a horizontal bench every ten feet, that is five feet in width. And then slopes will be required to be located on one parcel, which basically protects homeowners from sharing a slope with a neighboring property. That's something we run into pretty often as well. And then also, fill slopes over ten feet will require compaction testing, and then we have the option, we will have the option to require an engineer's report for sensitive areas or areas where there has been repeated slope failures. And then this is a couple of pictures with examples of what some of the slopes may look like. The one in the top left is actually a development that is in the city of Canton, one of the newer developments. And I will say that over the last winter, they had this already in place, and it's one of the only newer developments that did not have an issue with slope failures. And then, the picture to the right is sort of an example of what the benching may look like. I had trouble finding a good example, but, so, does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I noticed in one area, you said that it would, the slopes, and by the way, I'm real glad to see this, because I know that we've had some issues before, and it seems like this will take care of it. There's just one question. In one area, you said that it would be prepared and maintained, the slopes would be prepared and maintained. Who will be doing the maintenance?
That is actually how it's currently written in the UDC.
So?
That's section. So, the way that it will work is that we will require more strict development regulations for the developer, who will then have to do the revegitation, or the vegetation plan, and then, once they complete and get the CO, it will still be the responsibility of the homeowner at that time, but they're less likely to have the issue because of the revegitation.
So we don't expect to see as much, surely not as much, but the maintenance will be up to whoever buys the home?
Yes, or the homeowners association, if it falls on the homeowners association property. Yep.
Any questions? Okay, I guess we should open the public hearing for any comments from the public, if there's any regarding the issue here, Development Code, Chapter 107, dealing with slope easements. We'll be happy to hear them at this point, either in support of or opposed to. In support of first, I guess. I would hope that most people would support this type of regulations, certainly. Anyone opposed to this? If not, we'll close the public hearing and allow the council any other questions that they may have regarding this to our engineer. Anyone have anything? Okay, Ms. McGrew, sorry.
Will we be voting on this next meeting?
The next meeting, yes.
And when will it go into effect?
That's a good question. When will it go into effect? Will it be immediately upon signature? Okay, immediately. What's your sign? Okay. Anything else? All right. Let's move along to our second public hearing. I've asked our city attorney to give us a, well, let Ken go ahead with his presentation first, and then the city attorney will explain the process that we go through here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This is a public hearing in regards to the Planning Commission recommendation for case CUP 1904-001. This is conditional use approval, application for property known as Pod 18, Great Sky. It is located along Great Sky Parkway and Reservoir Drive. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this case on May the 20th, 2019. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application. I'm here to answer any questions councilmembers may have now or at any time during questions, discussions for councilmembers.
Yeah, I think what we probably should do is go ahead and hold a public hearing, which may raise some questions for the council, and then we can come back to you and ask any questions that we need to at that point. Mr. Dyer, will you give us the process and procedure we need to follow here?
So we will run this public hearing like the Planning Commission does, which means that each side, for and against, will have ten minutes. Everybody needs to be clear that if you came to this meeting to comment, now's the time to do it during the public hearing. State law requires you to fill out a form disclosing any contributions you've made to the city council, so you'd have to do that. If you signed up for a public comment, but you meant to comment about this matter, you would need to do that now, during the public hearing, because this is the time for us to establish the record. The process generally will be, presumably, the applicant will speak or make a presentation. Anybody who then wants to speak in favor of will speak, and then those who want to speak against it will speak, and then the applicant will have whatever time remaining to rebut or to respond to anything that was raised in opposition.
Okay, and if the council chooses, need be, the council can extend the time after the ten minutes, but that'll be up to the council to make that decision at that point, if it's needed. All right, the developer is going to make a presentation at this point.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Parks Hough. My name is Parks Hough, the law firm of Sam's Larkin Hough in Valley, and I represent the applicant in regards to this land, conditional use permit application that's before you. First, want to make sure everyone knows what we're talking about, I'm sure you all do. It's Great Sky, and this is a master plan community that was originally approved in 2000 by the city. It got underway, the roads were put in, and the master plan had all these different pods for different uses that were proposed at that time, and then the great recession happened. And the community, after just getting in a few of the pods with the single-family detached components, kind of stalled because of the recession. And, and less than two years ago, Landever, David Frame, my client, acquired the subdivision, and what's great is, he is experienced in master plan communities. He's not just bought this and is just then going to spin off pods. They've taken over the entire master plan community. First thing they did was spend a considerable huge sum of money to open the clubhouse that had been closed for two years. So they invested heavily in the community, and now, is with the market the way it is, and being able to rehab the amenity package, the landscaping, they're ready to move forward with the development, with other developments in the community. What's most important about Great Sky and any master plan community is vibrancy and moving forward with sales, so that that can support the amenity packages and all the things that people want in the community. This is the master plan shown, Great Sky. Basically, the brown is what my client acquired, which is the undeveloped portions and the other portions of the lots that had been put on the ground previously. The site we're talking about is Pod 18, which is highlighted there, showing as site. What is Pod 18? Pod 18 is supposed to be the town center, according to the master plan that was approved in 2000. The uses that, it's very hard to see, I didn't blow it up enough, I guess, is the permitted uses are neighborhood, commercial, any C1 uses are allowed there, single-family attached housing is allowed there, and multifamily apartments. Those were the uses that were detailed in the master plan that was approved in 2000. One of the uses that's not shown there is single-family detached, only attached, multifamily, commercial, and there's some other things on there like helipads and things like that that I cut off, but those are only the uses that are relevant. So what are we proposing on Pod 18? What we're proposing is a venture product, and Venture is very experienced in the marketplace in Canton and Northwest Metro Atlanta market, and what they propose is a detached townhome. And the reason why I say that is it's attached townhome, it is technically attached, but the roof lines are detached. So it's kind of a unique product that is designed to appeal to a specific buyer. So you have the look of detached homes, but they are attached, they meet the requirements of the code, they have roof lines that are separated, so visually, they look that different than a typical townhome. And then, very importantly, they're very wide units. They're a lot wider than the typical townhomes, and they're wide because they have a master on the main. So they have a lot of living space on the main floor. Obvious buyer is, you know, people who are empty nesters, who are looking for this type of lifestyle. One of the other components of this product is the fact that the landscaping in this pod will be maintained by a separate homeowners association that will be part of the master association, but there'll be a separate one for this one. So all the landscaping in here would be maintained by homeowners association. So again, the buyer is someone who is, you know, an empty nester, and, you know, has the disposable income to be able to pay for someone to be maintaining everything, but they also have the flexibility and the freedom to be able to maybe travel and things like that. That's the buyer. This is the plan that was originally submitted, showing the project, and a couple of things. We've got two access points, one on Reservoir Drive and one on Great Sky Parkway. And prior to the Planning Commission meeting, we had two meetings at Great Sky, where we invited the homeowners association, invited all the residents to the clubhouse, to share with them the plan, and one of the comments that came out of that was the potential to not have both access points. They were designed to have the site distance, but especially in Reservoir Drive, there was a concern about speed as you leave the cul-de-sac and come down, and so, we have looked at potentially removing that, assuming it doesn't meet any fire requirements that have a, require second access. So we would go and have one access point on Great Sky Parkway. And this is a conceptual draw, and the other comment we had was making sure trails connect together, and so this has connectivity. You can see, one of the features of this pod is its proximity to the amenity package, and we've got a, showing a pedestrian crossing and connectivity to that pedestrian, or to that amenity area. And then we also show landscaping that would be reestablished along the perimeter of the roadway, and so that it's an attractive view as you come along the adjacent roadways. This is giving you kind of a topography of the property, and one of the things that came out at the last Planning Commission meeting was some concerns and questions about whether we could do a fifty-foot buffer along, undisturbed buffer along our property. The reality is, like all properties in this area, there's a lot of topography, as the previous presentation showed, you've got topo with most of these projects. And so, what we end up in this situation is having to tie in the grades of the road, and then we slope down to the reservoir, in that if you had a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer, you would not have a developable piece of property between that of any note. So this is, as I said, the original master plan showed this as the town center. It showed it as commercial, multifamily, and attached housing. We've gone to the least intensive use on this pod, and there certainly is, if it was commercially developed, there'd certainly not be anything other than wanting clear views and access and visibility. Our goal is, and the way this is graded is such that the road structure that's internal to our site is great, is down lower, and so the homes and everything will sit down, will have landscaping all along, and where possible, we can try to preserve some trees. But the reality is, in this section, when the road came in, a lot of the trees in this area were removed, and what's growing there now are volunteer pines, which do look like they're providing some screening, but the reality is, those pines at some point become more of a hazard than a benefit. So what we would do is make sure that this is properly landscaped and such. I do have to point out that what we're asking for is ninety-two townhomes. The pod, as your staff report says, actually could be up to three hundred and sixty-seven units. So this is a very low intensity use of this pod. And, and so, we think that, and your Planning Commission also reviewed it, and after they reviewed it, they recommended approval of this. I think when you read your staff report showing that the property is designed for this use, your land use plan, or your Planning Commission recommended approval, that this is something that you should also recommend approval. And the reality that is positive for this community is, this is going to be a different product being offered in this community. And I know some of you lived in, live in master plan communities, and you know the success of them requires having different product types, so you have different buyers. You have a range of people who want to live there, and that gets you, you know, the opportunity for good sales, which will allow reinvestment in the amenity areas. And so, I'm here to answer any questions that you have, but we ask that you, and we are certainly glad to listen to suggestions that the council may have, and changes to the site plan and such, but we think that, and, as I said, Landever is very experienced in what a master plan community needs, and this product, this location, is what this master plan community needs, and we ask, and we've tried to have great communication with the community, we've had a couple of meetings, sent out emails to everyone, and tried to get everyone to be familiar with the product and understand what the proposal is, and I hope they understand what this pod is actually zoned for. So I appreciate your time, and I will be glad to answer the questions that you have and also reserve some.
Okay, let's go ahead, and we'll, how much?
Five seconds.
What?
He had five seconds left.
That's gonna be a heck of a rebuttal in five seconds, isn't it?
Yeah, I can.
You can do it. Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this proposal? Yes, sir, come on now. Did you fill out, did you fill out one of these?
I did, sir.
Okay.
He'll only have the five seconds.
Unless you want to give him more, the ten minutes was for everybody, so you might have to extend the time.
Is there a motion to extend it by additional five minutes for both sides?
Second.
Okay, motions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So you got more than five seconds.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to speak. My remarks, very brief, are simply that my wife and I are residents of Great Sky, and as such, we come to say to you, we strongly support this project as designed, as presented to you and to us as residents. The reason we support this is, and this support is shared by many of my other neighbors here in this room, not all, but many of them, is that my research through Realtors here in the county say, as, if they build this as designed at this price range, it will enhance our property values. What could be built there, as earlier permitted, would detract from our home values, and my wife and I are planning this to be our last move until we go to Darby's. So this is why we want to protect what we have. That's all I have to say.
What was your name?
Clint Baber. I filled out one of the forms.
You did, okay. You filled out one of these sheets, okay.
Yes, I did.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. How much was left on that now?
Four oh seven.
How much?
Four minutes and seven seconds.
Okay, all right. Anyone else speaking in support of the issue? Okay, speaking in opposition to the issue? We do have some people that filled out. Jim Wynden?
Well, I'm gonna try to speed things up, since we've got a deadline. So I had some prepared remarks, but after listening to that, gentlemen, figured the best thing I can do is talk to some of the things that he mentioned.
I'm not against that development, per se, okay? I think the townhome- I think the townhomes might be an added attraction, but as designed, I'm completely against it. And the reason that I'm against it is, this developer came in two years ago and promised us that he was gonna reinvigorate our community. And a minute ago, you heard the gentleman talk about spending money on the clubhouse. Well, yeah, they spent money to fix the clubhouse, and guess who they passed the cost along to? Us. Okay? So his benevolence is just a little bit shady. Now, what I'm mostly concerned about with whatever goes there is maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood. We've got a beautiful neighborhood there with a lot of trees, mature hardwoods, as opposed to volunteer pines. Now, the volunteer pines, let me get off track on that for a second. The volunteer pines are where the grass is supposed to be. Because the developer failed to maintain the property, the pines came up and they never cut them down. There's the hardwoods. Here's what he's wanting to cut down. And here's how he does it. This is the back of our subdivision that used to look like the pictures you just saw. So the benevolence of our new owners is suspect, to say the least. I don't think I agree with anything really, except the first slide that he showed, which a big blot with the name of Great Sky on it, which is what this development's gonna be if they don't maintain the integrity of the landscaping and the current trees that are there and the hardwoods. So whatever you guys approve, you guys and gals approve, is perfectly fine with me, as long as that area is maintained as it looks right now, instead of clear cut like the rest of the sections. That's it.
Thank you. How much, how much more time we got here?
12:47. 12 minutes and 47 seconds.
Okay.
Okay, if we go back to the site plan real quick, and good evening, my name is Nick Salka. I live at 509 Wooden Mountain Trail. I agree with Jim. I'm not opposed to this development. I am opposed to the site plan, though. I really think, if you look at the elevations that the developer presented, that the elevations are very nice. I think it's something that's gonna add to our neighborhood. But the problem I have is, you know, and I do appreciate you guys moving that secondary access along Reservoir Drive, you didn't meet your site distance of 390 feet at 35 miles an hour per G.I. encroachment, so I do appreciate your moving that. But what really, what really hurts this site plan, if you go back to it again, please?
Sorry, which one are you asking?
The actual site plan. Yeah. Either one, that's fine.
I'm sorry, you also need to say.
Yes. So if you look at, you go back to the other one, you just changed it. So if you, if you look at the building F, which is those three pods kind of up along Great Sky Parkway, as it, as that road loops through the, up kind of parallel, running parallel to Great Sky Parkway, going up and around the stream and then down, that's about 600 linear feet that's gonna be clear cut, and there's 60 feet of elevation difference from about D to F. So there's gonna be a lot of masquerading that's gonna occur. And if you've ever driven down our neighborhood and you've driven through the Great Sky community, you'll see there's kind of a buffer area where there's a lot of natural trees and stuff that protects the back of the residence and kind of gives you a certain character and feel in the neighborhood. And if you cut 600 linear feet from unit F to unit K and then plant it, it's never gonna look the same. And if you read the letter of intent that the city of Canton approved back in 2000, you know, this, and I'll go ahead and read it to you. Great Sky, which was formerly Viewpoint, former neighborhood name, has planned to be a high-end mixed-use community of approximately 894 acres on the west side of the new reservoir of the city of Canton. The majority of the land is intended to be used for residential area, residential areas with over a third of the land area to be retained in open space for residents of the community to enjoy. A pathway system will wind through the community, linking neighborhoods, and providing pedestrian access to approximately five miles of shoreline along the new lake. And you're really gonna change the high-end community feel when you cut all those trees. It doesn't matter what you plant back, they'll never, they'll never come back the way they should. So that's my biggest drawback to what their site plan is. Looks like they've incorporated some trails, I'd like to see some more, you know, per the letter of intent that was approved back in 2000, that one connection to the, you know, to the clubhouse and the pool, that's one little thing, but there really needs to be more of that based on what was approved. So, you know, right now, the current site plan condition, I know he says that he can't move that drive further south, goes through that stream, but he can. I mean, he could try to, you know, move that road down to the stream, or even get like a nationwide permit, you know, if you do a nationwide 29, you can actually get into a stream buffer and get into a stream, and if you keep it under 100 feet of impact to a stream, there's no mitigation credits. Okay? So there's things he can do, plus if you go back and look at that letter of intent that was filed and approved, he can do things that are creative. He can maybe narrow a right-of-way. He can like do something else with that site plan and make it, you know, more dense. Maybe he can save some cost on construction by narrowing the right-of-way. You know, you're spending less money on infrastructure, but this plan, the way it currently sits, I can't support it, and it's gonna change the character of our community. We all bought into it. Thank you.
Thank you. You haven't filled out a form? You will have to do that over there before you can speak, if there's still enough time to do it. How about Matthew Malai? I mispronounced that, I apologize again.
First, I'd like to thank the city staff. I went over there, stopped the engineers and asked for some public records, and they were very, very helpful and immediately provided public records, so pass along to the staff that they bent over backwards and helped me, and thank you for that. Backing up a little bit, he said that the developer immediately spent money on the clubhouse, and they said at the meeting at the theater, hey, we're gonna take care of the clubhouse and get it back up and operational. Just this last meeting, there's a $200,000 liability on the homeowners that they didn't say a word about. And I said, wait a minute, what is this 200, oh, that's fixing the clubhouse. So don't let people fool you that the developer took care of the clubhouse, they passed it on, and over our HOA dues is gonna have to pay that liability back. So I want to be very clear, it's very upsetting that that was even brought up. And I understand the city is not concerned about our residents' issues with the developer, and they are numerous. The master plan is over 20 years old, it's time to look at it again. This mayor and council passed Nordent a couple of years ago to say, wait a minute, timeout on these master plans. These conditional use permits are the opportunity for the mayor and council to say, wait a minute, things have changed in 20 years. We're being told that, hey, it's either this, or we could put apartments in there and that'll really make you mad. Well, no, no, there's a third option to say, no, put single-family homes in there. We don't have to follow the master plan, we can change it, update it, 20-year-old plan. I'm a firefighter volunteer here in the county, and as soon as I saw this slide come up without a second entrance to there, I'm saying, that's dangerous. I don't know if the fire department will approve it or what, but now what you're talking about is a one-way, if there's an accident at the beginning of that entrance on Great Sky Parkway and coming out of that pod, and somebody has a heart attack in the back, you can't get an ambulance in there now. To me, that's dangerous right off. I'm not saying it's any less dangerous than having entrance on Reservoir Drive, but it's The other thing is the master plan. Well, in the master plan, there's a, there's a set there for an additional amenities. We're gonna put 92 families in there, 180 cars, two cars per household, but another 92 families at the pool. Where's the second amenities if we want to follow the master plan? I think this is too much, too fast. Let's slow down and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dick Wilding?
My name is Dick Wilding, and I live in Great Sky, and I sent you all an email, and my two objections were, first one was the entrance off of Reservoir Drive, which has been taken care of, but the second one is the buffer zone. And I moved, I love driving down Great Sky Parkway and looking at all the trees. I used to like driving down Reservoir Road until they put all those apartments on every square inch of soil there. There's no greenery at all, and I just want to reinforce what's been said already, after you saw those pictures, what they're doing in misty morning, and I don't want to see a desert in there. I want greenery when I drive down Parkway. That's why I moved there. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Jimenez?
Five minutes and 39 seconds.
Oh, you got it, Todd.
Good evening, my name is Carlos Jimenez, I have been an owner, actually the third owner in this subdivision. I moved when the houses were just starting to be built, there were no roads, there was nothing. I've been here for over 17 years. I don't know most of these people, but I've been in the neighborhood and the Canton community for a long time. What the builder is proposing is a lie. This is not going to revitalize our community, quite the contrary. I already talked to realtors. If anything, they already established apartments that they put in front of the school are starting to hurt sales. Put more apartments, attach family homes in here, and our prices will go down. I respect what one of the members of the community said, I don't know who he found that out, but I researched in three different realtors. My neighbors are already selling the houses because of this. We're paying high taxes, we don't mind that because we have a nice community. In that area where this is proposed, there are deers, there's a lot of geese, we have the lake. To put this development there, any development except for single, large family homes will only detract and go against what we moved in for many years back. We were promised two amenity clubhouses. We were told about the different multi-units, but we were always told that they were going to be in the back, and that a separate amenity was going to come. So to come and quote that this was decided back in 2000 and they did everything, is a lie. Nobody's gonna be maintaining, and even if they do maintain things in there, to put houses in that area, especially the type of houses that they have, goes against what our community does. It's gonna lower prices, it's gonna hurt Canton, because people will move away from Canton, and you're gonna, you're not gonna have our money for taxes. This is not good for our community, I'm against it completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more?
Three minutes and 35 seconds in opposition and four minutes.
That's all that I have that have signed up to speak, filled out this form. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak that hasn't filled out a form? Okay, all right.
I don't, no, apparently not. So the developer, apparently, the way this system works, fortunately, unfortunately, is that the developer will get to rebut any comments that were made in opposition to the proposal. Okay, so, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to just briefly respond to some of the questions and concerns. Number one is, and it's come up a couple of times, saying that the original developer proposed two amenity packages, and that is something that would happen as the community further developed, and those commitments weren't made by this current property, no, that was the original developer, and when you had, you know, 2,400 units in the whole development, that's when you start doing another amenity packages as you get more and more people. I understand the frustration and anger, but the reality is, is that the amenity package was not being maintained and had degraded, but for this buyer coming in and infusing the capital to get it done, it would not be usable. The reality is that the cost of maintaining that many packages is high, and you have to have enough residents to share that cost. And so more residents is really what this community needs to be able to keep the energy going and keep, keep things moving forward. And, you know, this is, you know, the idea of this being single-family detached only, you could pretty much see that the way the property lies, you've got 150-foot buffer along the reservoir, and if you came in and you did single-family detached homes, you would have the same clearing that would be done with this project. It would basically be the same clearing, it would just be attached homes versus detached homes versus the proposed detached homes. What's very important is to understand that the original master plan, for a reason, had this area as the town center, which had proposed intensive use of the property, more activity, and that's why the townhome product works in this area here. And having project, products that complement each other is critical for it being like this. This product will do nothing but support the other product that is already on the ground. If you had a competitive product that, that is like everything else on the whole community, you're not gonna have a vibrant community that sells well and that maintains its vibrancy over a period of time. Because as we know, our population changes, and right now, our population getting older and wants a product with first-floor living, with common landscaping, but you know what? That's gonna change over time, and you want to have a community that has all these different products in it. And so to, it would be very short-sighted to say townhomes are not appropriate in a pod that is zoned for townhomes. That's what this pod is zoned for. It's not even, that, one of the permitted uses. If we came in with a plan for detached homes, we wouldn't be allowed, because the master plan that is approved by the city does not allow that product in this pod. We'd have to come in and master plan amendment to do it, and you'd have the same clearing. I understand the concerns about masquerading, and when you have a project where you've got 150-foot buffer, tree buffer, that is being maintained adjacent to the reservoir, and then you've got grade going up to the roadway, you have to grade in that. And we will be tying those grades in together, and we will have a master plan, landscape plan along the roadway that will be, complement the existing, existing view as you drive along there. And our goal, and our desire for our buyers, is to have a buffer between them and the road. It's only in our interest, as our buyers will want that buffer just as much as the people driving by have a buffer, so they're not looking into it. Keep in mind, this is set down below, lower grade, so it's not, these homes are not up on the same grade as the road. So your planning commission looked at it and recognized that the...
That's all your time.
Thank you, and recommended approval. So that's what we ask that you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will close the public hearing, and the council may ask our staff...
If you're gonna have questions, that can be part of the public hearing, if there's gonna be continued discussion. So don't close the hearing yet.
Okay, it won't be closed, okay? So we will, we will have questions, I assume we direct them to Ken? And there's a, does anyone have a question, Mr. Grant?
Yes, I just want to confirm, I guess, three things, going back to the master plan in 2000. I see in here that the entitlement was transferred to the new owner. Number one question, is that typical, is that customary?
Yes.
In ownership? And then the master plan, you know, again, in 2000, are there any statute of limitations on master plans, or how long those are in effect for?
No, master plan approval by city council, just like any zoning that city council would approve in the way of a rezoning of property, that runs with the property until the applicant or city council initiates a public hearing action to amend it.
Is that customary in other cities? Is that something that's unique to us, to Canton, or...
No, sir.
Okay. And then, could you confirm with me that that original master plan, was there a, a number of residents detailed in that master plan to add the second amenity package?
There was nothing.
I heard a reference to that.
In the letter of intent or the master plan, that I recall off the top of my head, that specified a certain time that a second amenity package had to be put in based upon, you know, say, this whole Great Sky development is approved for 2,300 residential units. There's nothing that specifies that that second amenity package has to go in when 1,000 units are occupied. a thousand units are occupied or fifteen hundred or 2,000 that I recall. But I will go back through the master plan, letter of intent, conditions of approval, and verify for the council members that there is, was not a specific requirement that the second amenity had to be built after a certain number of residences.
That'd be great. Just because the number was quoted, I would, I just wanted to, to, to get some clarification on that. Developer also mentioned a master landscape plan would be submitted to keep the new development in character with the existing developmental great landscape on Great Sky Parkway. Does the city have approval on that master landscape plan and does that dictate whether or not the project can move forward? Is, is that, could that be made a condition?
Well, if city council were to approve this condition, his permit approval, the applicant would submit construction drawings for the proposed development within this pod. Part of the construction plans that were to be submitted to the city, number one, there has to be a tree count and tree survey done for existing conditions and they have to do recompense for the amount of trees that are removed from the site for grading and that has to be shown in a landscape plan that is reviewed and approved through the city staff. The city has a list of plant materials that are acceptable.
So again, just for clarification, I think the city attorney nodded yes to this, but it could be conditioned that the project approval is dependent upon the landscape plan being acceptable to the city?
Especially if you wanted to go beyond what the ordinance requires.
And we could go, we could go beyond the ordinance with, with that condition, correct?
Because basically, everybody seemed to, even the applicant, seemed to say that they want a plan that to be, match what's out there.
Correct. Again, I'm just trying to reconcile what developer's saying and what...
Figured out, figured out how to word that would be the challenge.
Okay. It's your job, right? Thank you. That, that's...
If I might add, Councilor Grant, as it relates to the landscape plan, landscaping as the city attorney, Mr. Dyer indicated, if you want to go beyond exactly what the city's regulations are relative to the landscape plan, that sort of thing, you could place a condition that a certain percentage of the trees be hardwood species of a certain size such that you could get massive, or not massive, but a mass of trees, a percentage of the trees could be, say, you know, eight-inch diameter, twenty-foot-tall oaks. That would be something that could be considered as an additional condition.
Thank you.
Mr. Patton, did the city not hold public hearings via, I guess, the planning commission, changing the, essentially changing the zoning of all categories that allow multifamily to a conditional use?
Yes.
And essentially that affects the zoning and it, and it was, is that, as far as you know, consistent with the legal requirements to make the change?
Yes, sir.
Did the current owner acquire the property after we made that zoning change?
If I'm not mistaken, the current owner was the owner of, prior to that amendment to the Unified Development Code.
Okay. I know it said less than two years, so I wasn't, I know she mentioned that, so I wasn't sure of that. Are there, to your knowledge, are there any covenants that will be a part of this that would prohibit any renting out of these townhomes or anything?
That will be up to the applicant, developer. They've not presented any covenants to the staff in regards to this pod. I'm not aware of anything in covenants that runs with Great Sky. Generally, covenants are enforceable, if you will, through civil action, through property owners.
Right.
The city doesn't get involved in the enforcement of covenants.
So under the master plan, it, there is no requirement for a buffer along Great Sky Parkway or Reservoir Parkway or any other street in there as far as we know?
I did not see any language at all specific to a required buffer along Great Sky Parkway, Reservoir Drive, or any of the others.
Do we know what, what the actual right-of-way is of those streets? And if so, would, would they be allowed to encroach on the right-of-way?
They would not be allowed to encroach within the right-of-way. The right-of-way for Great Sky Parkway does vary because you have that divided section out next State Route 140. For the most part, major portion of Great Sky Parkway is sixty and eighty-foot right-of-way. There are some places where it gets to a hundred, hundred-twenty feet in and around the roundabout. And then again, like I said, the larger right-of-way width would be where it's divided out next to State Route 140. Reservoir Drive, if I'm not mistaken, is a sixty-foot right-of-way, might be eighty feet. I'll verify what those are and get that information back to council before the next meeting.
Particularly just in, in the area of this development. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have a question? Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions or just comments or things to get my head around. The first one is the life safety issue and there are a lot of people who are concerned about the traffic. And with having two access into the development was an issue. But I understand, Mr. Huff, that the developer has now decided on only one access to the property, correct? Okay. So, so if there is only one entrance, then there's not going to be a lot of cut-through traffic because there wouldn't be any way to cut through. That was another concern. I think the issue, the life safety issue was more on Reservoir Drive than on Great Sky Parkway. So the trail system, as I understand it, the developer is also planning to adhere to the trail system that was set up originally and connect with that trail system through, that was another issue that I needed to get cleared up to be sure that you're doing that. And Mr., I, I just wanted to ask you, Ken, about the specific site plan, if the, the specific site plan approved by the city cannot change, including any conditions that we put on that site plan, correct?
If you make it a site plan specific, if you will, as a condition...
So, so two or three years down the road, things couldn't change, the city would hold the developer or whoever is in charge, they would hold, that the specific site plan would continue to hold up, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Without, kind of, for council for changes.
Okay. Also, I wonder, I wonder, Mr. Huff, you were talking about the amenities that were made to the clubhouse and then somebody said that the homeowners association was going to have to pay for them. Could you clear that up? Did the developer make the amenities, but yet the, the homeowners association's got to pay for them?
I, I was not involved in, in that, but I do know that the developer put money into the restoration of the clubhouse that I believe had been closed for two years. And whether that shows up as, as an expense for the HOA, I have, I was not involved in that, so I don't, I can't relate to that. But I can get that answer.
Okay. If you could get that information, because, you know, if you say that the homeowner, I mean, the developer is going to make amenities, we all assume that the, the developer's going to pay for them. And I think that's what the residents were assuming as well, so we might need to clear that up. Okay. It seems like the biggest issue right now that I can see is the buffer. You know, we've heard a lot of people talk about that clear-cutting is going to destroy the nature, and I agree it will. But then there's some, some areas that you're going to have to cut some trees. So I think whenever we start thinking about this, we need to consider as a council about what Mr., what Ken has just, Mr. Patton has just said about if trees are destroyed, then we can condition other trees to be planted, the same caliper, the same type, as were destroyed. So I think we'll want to keep that in mind as we go forward. Right now, Mayor, I think that's, oh, one other thing. Are sidewalks required?
Yes.
On both sides or one side?
Both sides.
Okay. And this is not a private gated community?
Not at the present time.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had for right now.
Okay. Anyone, Mr. Yon?
Yes. Talking about the second entrance, I understand that the people were concerned about it being so close to the roundabout and it is kind of a blind curve a little bit through there. So I understand that concern. And then they seem, most people seem not real pleased with doing the way completely with that entrance. But looking at this site plan, it looks like you could move it a hundred feet down the road. And I'm wondering if they had looked at that as an option also, you know, rather than, you know, an entrance or no entrance, has looked at moving it.
We did, we did look at it and there is, I mean, technically, site distance that can be achieved on that reservoir drive. And so it's not a statutory requirement, but it was a feeling from the residents that, that as, as you're coming back down the hill, the speeds are up and so they just didn't like that proximity there. It can slide down potentially and, and be further away from the roundabout and that's something certainly we'd be willing to look at.
Yeah. I would, I think from hearing some of the comments, I think that's something some of the, would probably like in lieu of just completely eliminating it, if I heard correctly. So, you know, just, just take a look at that, too. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. And pardon my voice, please. If you can't understand me, I'll, I'll repeat myself. It appears that some of the driveways are very short and that if a car is parked in the driveway, it might hang over a sidewalk. Is that a possibility?
There's always going to be that possibility. That exists in some of the existing development that has already been built and occupied within other parts of the city now.
Okay. What about water quality? This is very close to the water, the reservoir. And there's also a creek that runs through this. I'm concerned about water quality and runoff from landscaping chemicals.
The reservoir is quite a large body of water in and of itself. The reservoir was built and designed to serve as, if you will, a stormwater management tool for the Great Sky development as well as Bluff development. And because of the size of the reservoir, the pool of the water, with inflows of the reservoir, things of that nature, mixing, you have a tendency that the water quality is not going to be harmed as much. Mr. Hatabian could probably give you a little more information relative to that than I could.
Please.
The hundred and fifty-foot undisturbed buffer is, is the reason that, that's put there is for water quality protection. So that, that is an undisturbed buffer along the, the high, high watermark of the reservoir zone.
That's adequate for the creek and the reservoir?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Will detention or retention ponds be necessary for this pod?
No.
Now, thank you, Mr. Hatabian. Mr. Patton, where are the units attached, one unit to another? In a meeting that we had, the developers showed the units were attached dining room to master bathroom. Are they still attached in that way?
Yes, ma'am. If you recall the slide that showed the front facades of the buildings, there was a small section at ground level that went up about ten feet. That's where that attachment would occur.
And could you explain to me the benefits of doing these as attached townhomes rather than detached, single-family homes? It seems contrived.
It's not a traditional townhome, if you will. This pod eighteen, the existing conditions do specify single-family attached homes or apartments for the residential component. This was a mechanism to meet the attachment requirement. There's another development in the city that has done the same thing. Matter of fact, there's two that have done the same thing in regards to meeting the requirement for attached units. I will add that all of these units, because of how close the walls are going to be together that are not a solid wall, they're going to have to have fire-rated walls with no window, door penetrations on those sides in accordance with requirements of the building code.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Ms. Goodman?
What is the advantage of that? Can you tell me why they're attached? I mean, I know you spoke of that just now, but I'm still not understanding, what is the advantage of it being attached versus not being attached? Is it the, is it the lot itself or the property itself?
Some of it has to do with topography of this pod, but there again, the existing master plan calls for attached units and not detached units. And, you know, detached units on this pod, the yield would be certainly a good bit less than the ninety-two units that are showing with the townhomes. So it's not a traditional townhome with a common wall.
So if they build a traditional townhome, I mean, would they get out of that particular property?
Oh, they could probably get more than ninety-two if they wanted to of a traditional townhome. This way, if you look at, remember that front facade drawing, it gives a little bit of a sense, if you will, that those are detached units. But there is that attachment section.
I agree, it looks that way, but since it isn't, I was, and you would think that you'd get more units the other way. I'm just kind of wondering why they're going this way, I guess. Maybe he could speak to that?
Yeah. This is responding to a market need in that what this product is, is for someone who wants, you know, a home that they don't have any yard maintenance because it's all common. And so when you do common maintenance, you want smaller yards because the, the cost of maintaining all these independent yards is very expensive. So you have homes closer together, you have common maintenance of the yards. But these are a buyer that's wanting, they're willing to pay a little bit more. And so instead of having their entire connection being common, only a small portion of their wall is connected and it's a, a much wider unit. So I don't know what the calculation would be, but we could certainly get a lot more townhomes on this project if we did a traditional townhomes where they were all smashed together. And these are a lot wider than a traditional townhome, too. So again, that also cuts down the density. So the, the, it's responding to a market as much as anything of a certain buyer who wants, you know, first-level living, wants the maintenance-free yard and is willing to pay for not only the home, the cost of the home, but the cost of the yard maintenance that goes along with it. So it, it's really responding to the market. Coincidentally, this pod only allows attached product. But that's more of a coincidence than the reality of what Venture did was design this. And this was designed for this. This is, he, he, they said this, this is what we want to design here. So it went to the architects to design it. It wasn't something he pulled off the shelf.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. McGrew?
I would have to put condition on it that the 50-foot buffers would have to be adhered to unless there was an extreme hardship, and also, I don't know how we can make a decision until we know exactly about the egress and ingress.
Okay. Anyone else? I don't know if he was asking a question or not, or just making a statement. I assume you're making a statement.
Making a statement. I don't know how we would make a decision without knowing that ingress/egress specifically.
Well, I think that's something that, you know, tonight, we are, the council is discussing it, and we will then take, discuss it even further at our next meeting, at which time we'll theoretically could make a decision. There would be no more public input at that point, but if there are questions that the council has tonight or in between now and the next meeting, we can direct them to Mr. Patton, who can get us answers. Mr. Dyke?
I, I think the way it's presented to you, that would be the council's choice about whether one or two, and then there's going to be engineering requirements regardless of what you do, in terms of site distance and so forth. But I think I understood the developers were willing to go either way, it's just you've got some saying one, some saying two. You would be deciding that.
Well, you know, in, in past developments, we've pushed for two every chance we got, you know, because it made more sense, and it was good access, and, you know, people could get in and out, and so could emergency vehicles and so forth. If there's just one entrance, if something happens, that one entrance is blocked, what happens? You know, you can't get in or out, anyway. But, you know, this, this, you know, the requirement for a second entrance is like 125 units, so that doesn't necessarily meet the mandate of, of a second entrance, but that would be up to the council to make that decision.
Kind of common sense.
Yes.
Common sense.
Right. Anyone else? Okay, at this point, we'll, we'll close the public hearing portion, and I think we've probably already discussed it on the council about as much as we can, unless you have something else you want to talk about at this point. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you. Next item. Item 6A, permission request, is that, let me see where I'm at, okay. Permission request for two temporary storage containers, the Mill on Etowah River rafting project. Let's see, who is handling that? I don't know. Ken or Bill?
No, the, the developer's here to discuss it.
Okay.
Let me give you just a little, little background on this, so that it may help you.
Before we, before we go too far, I, I'd just kind of like to ask the question, why isn't that before the variance board and not this council? That's the only question I'd have, and I'm not sure why.
So that's, that's what I'm going to bring to your attention. So, the city had been approached by a small business that wants to open up, that basically does rafting trips. They exist in another city in Georgia. They wanted to come up to Canton, and they wanted the ability to do rafting trips along the Etowah River. They have reached some agreement with Mr. Hodge and the Mill to have a takeout and location at the Mill. That permanent location is not ready. The small business would like to, however, go ahead and get started this summer and in this season with business. They ask if they could have temporary storage containers to hold the rafts. That's not what they would typically use in a permanent facility. We let them know that that doesn't fit our ordinance, they would have to seek a variance. They felt like they did not have time to seek a variance, then come before council, and then be able to get their business off the ground this season. We explained to them, count, that the staff can administratively approve what they're asking for, and that really the only thing that would be of benefit to them, that could get them started immediately, would be to come directly to council. We also explained that council may decide to say that, no, you have to go the variance route, but that was really the only option that we had to offer them, and I know that at least in past retreats, councils talked about bringing more activity to the river, so I didn't want to, I did not want to stop a project that you might want to see because of that technicality, but did offer them the opportunity to request, as anyone else can, through the city clerk, to be added to the agenda to discuss their need. Does that make sense?
Sorta, sorta, but...
Issue of timing?
Yes.
That doesn't, quite honestly seemed to be what I would consider maybe an emergency or anything, and that, you know, had, had this come earlier, they could have gone the proper route, right?
Yes. So the, the issue at hand is that they can have a storage container, but the requirement is that the storage container has to be screened, and it has to be on a permanent surface of concrete or asphalt.
Correct.
The small business is saying, this is only temporary for the season, can we get by without doing the screening and the asphalt and the concrete?
So how does, how does constructing something in the flood 150-foot undisturbed buffer area work?
Well, in this case, they wouldn't be constructing anything, it would be a temporary place there and then removed at the end of the season.
So if they wanted to bring in a, if they wanted to bring in a house or something and sit down there temporarily, they could do that. I, you know...
Mr. Patton may have more information.
Container's the same thing, you know, really, but you're going to have to, to put pour concrete pad, which I'm, you're saying is not going to be there initially.
No.
But that would be disturbance of the 150-foot buffer, would not?
This proposal, like I said, outside storage, our regulations specify that it has to be screened on a concrete pad. I was asked the question, if city council could approve this. The attorney's probably not going to like what I'm fixing to say, but my 40 years of training in local government, city councils, county commissions can approve anything they want to until a judge tells them otherwise.
Of course, of course.
So I pass that information along. They're here to see if you would approve allowing them to put that container down there temporarily. We don't have any allowance for a temporary storage in our regulations at all.
So the next time somebody wants to build a little bit across the setback line, they can just come straight to us, and why would they go with the planning, with his own in Board of Appeals? I mean, we may be setting more of a precedence here by doing this, even though it may have happened, and we may have done it in the past, I still think we're avoiding the proper procedure here to, to get this accomplished, but, of course, I don't get a vote, keep that in mind, too.
Then, the one thing, Mr. Mayor, council members, is that, as the city manager indicated, they are asking for this temporarily for a season. Our regulations do not address temporary outside storage. That could be something we need to look at as a staff and run through the planning commission, city council as an amendment, but our current regulations do not address temporary outside storage. I think that could be a little bit of the unique nature of this in regards to city council decision, but normally it would be a variance.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Anybody?
Just a procedural question. So if we were to review this, then would it go on the work agenda for July and then, or is it the approach to put it on for the voting meeting?
It would be on the voting meeting, I assume, because it's on the agenda here for discussion. It would be on the voting meeting in two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. Thank you. Does anybody have... Well, here again, it seems like, you know, it's almost common sense, they don't need it but six months. If we approved a temporary storage facility for six months maximum, why would you want people to pour a concrete, concrete pad for six months? I mean, to me...
Well, I don't think you would, I think, I think...
That's what they're asking, can they put one without a concrete pad for six months?
Without being screened, like our ordinance.
Pardon?
The only reason is that's what our ordinance says, and if we need to change ordinance, may we all, may need to change ordinance for temporary, no screening.
Does the ordinance address temporary? Does the ordinance address anything temporary?
Apparently not.
So I think that gives us a little leeway to use our noggins.
Mr. Grant?
So, if I understand this correctly, our next meeting, again, with it being temporary, and I agree, if we, we possibly should review, you know, that, that usage in our ordinance, but we could put a condition that it could be no longer than six months, or whatever many months we, we want, correct? So, so it would just be a temporary thing and not granting permanent, you know, permanent exemption from, you know, our ordinances, so.
Could we hear from the advocate?
Sure.
And see what they have.
Hi, I'm not Mr. Hodge, but I'm his proxy. I'm Dana Cox, I worked for Mr. Hodge for six years, and worked for Penn Hodge Properties and the Mill on Etowah. So I'm kind of the project manager under Grant and Mr. Hodge as well. So yes, what we're asking is, we are aware that a variance is the formal process, and like Mr. Peppers and Mr. Patton mentioned, the outfitter kind of came to us a little bit quicker, closer to the brewery opening and the synergy between the brewery and the river, he really wanted to make sure that we could get some sort of presence on the river this summer. Off grand openings this weekend, you know, they wanted to make sure that they had a presence this summer, this season, on the Etowah. And so our solution for that is, the location of the pad, it's a gravel pad, currently exists, like Ms. Wilson, Wilson mentioned, we don't want to pour a concrete pad that we would have to rip up in four to six months to create more parking. The location's actually located in phase three of the parking, which has not been submitted or approved yet, so it would not interfere with any of the phase three. Right now, we've kind of pushed it down towards Walenska Port, towards Autozone to not interfere with the brewery's operations or any of the existing facilities there. We just need somewhere to put his containers for him to store inventory, just to operate from. At the end of the season, that, those storage containers would be removed and possibly relocated to somewhere else on the property, most likely that would meet the conditions of a pad, or we may come up with a whole different idea after the end of the season. We're kind of exploring the property, as most of you know, there's a lot of moving parts over there, so we're trying to accommodate the small businesses, work with the synergy with Reformation as well, that's opening this summer, and get what they need as well in a timely fashion. So we are aware that it is a special request, and we thank you for your consideration, and I can answer any questions.
Do you know the size of the quantity of what you're looking for?
Yes, sir, there's, there's two, there's two 40-foot cubic containers typical that you would see, you know, on a train track, they're eight by eight and then 40 feet tall. So there'd just be two of those, similar to what the brewery has already behind the property, but because they're industrial, those requirements don't apply to them, so we're trying to kind of create that industrial chic look. So you would be able to see them a little bit, but they do kind of flow with the property, and again, they're away from the current parking, they wouldn't be, you know, right in the middle of everything, they're kind of down towards the river and towards Autozone.
So, so how, how will this operate, as far as I could see? You know, it could be a put-in or take-out place, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Were they, were they going to put in, put in to take out there?
I believe, yeah, they would take out at the Mill, at our property, down at the brewery. He would actually do his POS and waivers and everything outside of the brewery, so he has a, an agreement worked with Spencer Nix and the brewery to kind of operate, sell, swipe, POS, you know, whatever he's got to do as far as charging people inside the brewery, and he would just use our containers to store his materials. He would bus people up to probably, I think, Etowah River Park, I think is what he's discussed with Mr. Peppers and some of the other parks and rec department, public access that's up the river, that he would take people up to to operate, is that right?
He's looking at two things, he's looking at a, at a inner tube, which is a shorter route, and he's looking at a kayak, which would come off of 372 in Ball Ground, and basically, customers would park at the Mill, he would bus them and their rafts, whichever kind of trip it is, to an access point that's currently along the river, let them in, and they do guided tours till they get to the Mill.
And where's that access point?
Etowah River Park has an access point.
So would, would we normally allow a business to operate there on a public park?
We, we already do.
I know we...
We already do with like soccer programs and things like that. What we do restrict them on is, we say you can't put up signage, you can't make your transactions at those locations, you can't put any permanent facilities at those locations. If you're simply just taking people to drop in at a public access point, that's probably okay.
Okay, so, so that would not be exclusive then, right? So any, anybody that wanted to take, bus them up there, they could do that?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. That's good. Anyone else? Mr. Grant?
You mentioned that the Mill would be the takeout point. Does that currently exist, or how, what are the regulations to, are there regulations, or it's just...
There's not any regulations.
The closest to the water?
Basically, you can pull out at any point along the river. You may be on private property, you may be on public property, it just depends. I know our staff is working on access at Heritage Park where the creek comes in right there, there's kind of a sandy beach area, and speaking with the small business owner, he expects that, you know, kayakers, for instance, they're going to find places to stop, they may have lunch on the way or what have you. The tuber's really just going to be floating from, from in to out, and so when they get to the takeout point at the Mill, he'll have staff there available to help them exit into the Mill property.
And there's a natural kind of beachy, like leveled, on-grade, love, it's kind of a natural takeout point that's out of the current tube that exists already.
And just to clarify, people are taking out now kayaks, I mean, I've been on the river, you can take them out wherever you want, I mean, at current, and, and where we put them in, I mean...
Hold on.
I just, this is one, one more point, that, that sort of the, the area, Etowah River Park and what we're looking at Heritage is to activate the river more, and get more people on the river, so I think it does, you know, coincide with our long-term plans for that. Mr. Yon?
Yeah, my question was, just to clarify, we are talking about something like a steel cargo container type, and if they left it on wheels and didn't set it on the ground, we wouldn't have any say-so at all?
Well, I don't think they have wheels, but they could, they're easily by a rigger to come and pick up and, and move, and that's what we would do, yeah. We've ordered a couple of these already.
But if you backed a couple of semis back, trailers back in there, it would be, we wouldn't have any say-so at all.
About 30-minute process, yeah.
So this would be more attractive than that.
Mm-hmm, yes.
The, the trip that you were talking about for canoes out of Etowah, did you say Etowah River Park?
I think the tubing, probably the floats, the regular inner tubes that are a shorter would be at Etowah River Park, I believe the kayakers would be further up for a little bit of a longer trip.
One question I had is, right now, the ramp there is not very good, it's always been terrible, and we were, we were looking at that and going to do something, but to my knowledge, we've never done anything there, so that would require a cost of us doing something in order for that to happen, is that correct?
You, you can still get in right now, there's just some sediment in there, but you can still...
Yeah, a lot of sediment, every time it rains.
You can still, you can still get down to the river through that ramp.
Well, and keep in mind, too, sorry to interrupt, that the small business owner would be responsible for all the logistics and approvals with the city, Parks and Rec, Mr. Peppers. All that we need as the landlord and the property owner is just to make sure that we can put those two containers.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that we aren't going to have any costs in this project for, for your venture.
He's already investigated, he's met with Parks and Rec and Mr. Peppers multiple times, and I think that they have a pretty solid plan put together that everybody's okay with so far, as far as the logistics of the operation, we're not involved in those, so.
Mr. Peppers, would there not be a fee associated with that? Is there not with soccer association and the other organizations, they don't have to pay a fee?
It's a little different in that they are reserving a space that nobody else can use. I mean, it'd be, it'd be similar to if I hired a personal trainer and took them down to the park to run with me, the city's not going to charge them a fee to run with somebody in the park, because they're using the park for what it's supposed to be for. In this instance, they're using a public launch site to launch folks into the river, so it was designed for. If we were leasing them a space that they were solely going to control for a period of time, that would be different. So what could happen, though, is you could have a situation where the small business has a special event, and they look to do a special event permit at the park to operate out of a certain area, or have a picnic, or something like that, that would be a different situation.
So they will have at least the use of that facility with no, no fee charged at all, right?
Legally, it's just a group of people that are going to put into the river at a ramp that we built. We don't control who goes in there now, I mean, people are going in there now, we don't know who they are, when they're going, or...
But when you see a bus pull up there three or four times an afternoon, or maybe more, it begins... more, it begins to take on a little different connotation than, you know, just somebody using it once in a while.
Sure.
It's a business venture, is what it is.
It'd just be hard to, as long as you allow any business to do it, then it's...
Right.
If you want to say, well, individuals don't have to pay a fee, but a business does, I mean, that's going to be hard to police, just like people going into an exercise group. And you could be very strict about those things and try to control it and charge a fee, but it's very, very difficult to do.
Okay, that's good. Anyone else?
Just one quick point, I guess, as Mr. Grant was kind of alluding to, you know, this is, you know, creating, I always look for opportunities to create more awareness, and I think what the mill project is doing is a differentiator. Unique story, I was talking to someone who, a business that will be setting up in there, and they had mentioned this will now be the only city where you can live, work, play, and kayak to work. So they will be, that'll be a neat little thing that will maybe attract different businesses too.
Anyone else? Okay. So...
She wanted to ask a question.
What's that?
She had her hand up there.
Oh.
Melissa?
No, no.
Melissa had her hand up, I don't know.
Okay. Sure.
She's providing information.
Come on up.
My family and I, we have four kayaks, and we use the Etowah River Park and put an output in it, is currently a muddy mess most of the time. You're going to lose your shoes in there. It's hard to go in and out if there's another person going the opposite direction, so you really have to take your time. Only one boat kayak can go down at a time, one can come up at a time, it's kind of a long walk, it's curvy. And I would hope that if you're going to put a business in there, that there are plans to make the ramp sufficient enough to handle the capacity that you're planning on, that you're wanting to encourage. Also, I'd like to suggest someone cleaning up the river with all the rains that we've had in the last year, there are a lot of trees that have fallen in, the banks have a lot of debris on them. So if you're planning on having huge capacities, crowds of people that are looking for recreation, that may not be experienced, a frequent kayak or a rafter, that might be something that the city needs to consider too, before moving forward.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I totally agree, that river needs, need to clear out the trees that have fallen in and all that, because, quite honestly, those are very dangerous. Well, you get sideways against one of those trees, and I've been there, a boat will sink, or I own about a kayak, but a boat will sink real quick if it turns sideways against something in the water. And so it could be dangerous. But not only that, but I think it would make it much better for that river to be cleared out during that, whatever stretch it is that you're going to be, have boaters or tubers or whatever going down. My guess is that would be a very expensive project, because it'd be pretty tough getting those trees out of there, I would think, but it obviously could be done. But that was a very good point there.
There?
Yes, ma'am.
One comment on that. Our small business is actually Nomadic Flow Outfitters. They currently have an operation on the Yellow River, out towards Conyers. Most of the principals of that business are firefighters, EMT medics, and so one thing that they do with the Yellow River is they do go through and they take it upon themselves to clean up and to make it safer.
Very good.
Now, obviously, there'd be no, you know, there's no restrictions on that, you know, there's no conditional uses for that or anything, but they do take pride in their part of the, I don't know all the river terminology, but they're part of the group that cleans up the Yellow River, you know, and that's how Nomadic Flow and Reformation has a relationship with Spencer, because they're both a part of some of those same clean-up-the-river groups, you know, whatever their proper terminology is on that side of town. But that is something that they take pride in, and that they are looking to bring to this area too.
Good, it'd probably help us out there.
Another thing, I was on the Parks Rec Committee, and a year ago, we talked about doing, looking at these floating docks and putting some in, and we've not made any progress on that, but I think it's time, if we're talking about doing this. Also, Etowah River Keepers told me several times, they have a lot of people that will volunteer to help clean up this river.
They've approached us as well.
We've already done this one time when we had, you remember when we had all those logs underneath the ridge down here?
Well, they just did that again, too, you know.
The city did.
Yeah, the city did that. But there are a lot of people that want to help do that. So I think if we, you know, whether we do that or not, we still should clean up the river. But that floating dock would be a great way to be something better than what we already have. Rome has one, and they do this all the time, so it's an easy thing, go over and take a look at it, decide if we want to do it, and come back and put it in. But it's going to be some cost to us, so that's what I...
Well, in the future, the property owner has, again, we're trying to just get what we need to operate this summer, like while the brewery opens this weekend. But in the future, there has been discussions with DNR and Army Corp. of doing some sort of, I don't know, stairs, floating docks, something of that nature that the property owner would most likely pursue, but it just wouldn't be this summer. We'd have to get a little further on some other pieces first, but that's kind of, you know, in the...
As Melissa mentioned, we have to worry about safety. It is not safe walking down in that mud. I've been there before, I've done it before, it's very, it's very slippery.
Anyone else? Okay, and obviously, I need a decision tonight, right?
I mean, it would be better for the, it'd be better for the small business owner if they knew that they could move forward as soon as possible, since we're already in the summer.
Otherwise, it would be the...
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
Perhaps the solution is to direct staff not to cite them, as opposed to approve it.
Okay, okay.
Give the staff direction.
I did want to clarify that this request is just to place the storage containers, it's not anything concerning with the business or...
And the business still has to have a business license.
This is really just about allowing the owner to put a storage, two storage units...
Temporarily.
Temporarily on the property.
I do think we need to put a time limit on it.
I do too. I think six months is what they'd ask.
I'd make a motion to approve with the limitation of six months.
Now, wait a minute, you make a motion, we what?
Approve with the limitation of six months for the temporary storage container.
Bobby had just suggested, he suggested that we...
Maybe we have a moratorium on enforcement of this, on this property, I don't, that's probably getting too tricky.
That would open us up to, if other people in that same period wanted to do that, they could do it, correct? Or...
Yeah, it's, my thought is probably just too complicated, so.
Second bill's motion.
Okay.
So the motion is approved for six months.
Six months.
Six months, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Would we want it limited to this one applicant?
Well, that's the only one that's asking.
Well, I know, but it would eliminate anybody else, and well, y'all said you could put containers in.
We'd just be for this applicant.
Are we trying to make it...
Well, I mean, you know, you may have that anyway.
They'd have to come to us.
How about up the mill?
I don't know if you could do that, did you? I mean...
What you need to do is ultimately amend your ordinance to provide for temporary storage for seasonal uses or whatever, but, you know, this is the only property owner who's come and asking, that would be the way I'd look at it.
If we were to change our ordinance down the road, I would want to specify that they have some temporary screening also, be it a privacy fence or some hedges for future reference.
Bobby, do we not need to have a vote as to whether we want to bypass the zoning Board of Appeals or not? Or just the motion does it automatically?
I guess the motion does it automatically, I think. You're into that world, you're into that world.
Ken said we can do anything we want.
And Ken is right, I would never say so.
We have a motion in a second, anything else? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, all members voting for the motion.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we get to the minutes. We have, you have your draft council minutes from May 16th. Any changes or corrections to be made to those?
Motion's approved.
Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Yon seconded that motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, okay. I have your financials, well, Chief Nathan, Financial Officer Nathan Ingram is away, so he can't answer your questions, but Billy could, but Nathan is nearing the birth of his first granddaughter, right?
Oh, really?
So he had to leave quickly and on a trip, and so hopefully he will be back, and we congratulate him and wish them well. Any questions or anything about the financials?
I have one question on the hotel motel tax, and you may know or you may not, if you don't, we can have him get back later. But under expenditures on Canton Main Streets, it's had a pretty big jump, and I'm wondering if it was like a one-time thing, or if you know what that's about?
Melissa might be able to answer that.
Yes, at two hundred percent, so that's, it kind of stuck out to me.
Does that possibly have anything to do with the signage?
Actually, if you don't know, then we can wait for Nathan.
I believe that is the allocation that we do. We do it at the beginning of the year, and then we do it in the middle of the year. I believe that's what you're seeing, sir.
Okay, well, we can defer that question until later, since he's not here.
Yeah, I had the same question, so.
Anyone else? Okay, that's for informational purposes, so we don't need any motions. We don't have anyone in the ten-minute public info period, thank goodness. Under old business, discussion of possible action to accept the revised joint project agreement between the City of Canton and Cobb Marietta Water Authority for the Hickory Log Creek Reservoir Project. Mr. Otavio?
This was brought up a couple of months ago, and what was attached is two versions of the agreement. One, which was approved and signed by the Water Authority, and the second was a modified version of it that tried to incorporate any language for potential future consolidation with Cherokee Water Authority, if, you know, if that ever happened and what the conditions would be, so.
The only difference here is that the second one does incorporate our option at some future date, doesn't mandate anything. It just says that Cobb Marietta Authority would allow, under certain conditions, us to transfer our partnership to the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority. No mandate, it just gives us the option. Before that, that's not even an option, but it still would require council approval and moving forward, but that's what it is. But I think it's important to have that option out there. It's important, because I think we have an obligation to look at all aspects of our water and sewer system and all the options that may be out there. And I think you have to consider that as an option, and if it turned out to be the best option. And for the citizens and their cost, we already know right now that City of Canton water customers pay about nineteen or twenty percent more for water than city residents who are on the Cherokee Water and Sewer System, and almost fifty percent more on sewer. I mean, to me, everybody knows where I'm coming from on this, but Cobb reluctantly has agreed to put this in there as a part of the joint project agreement, which would allow any transfer only to the Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority, no other authority, nobody else, if the council chose to do so, and if the Water and Sewer Authority chose to accept. That's the only difference between what we've been looking at and the new version. Mr. Grant?
I guess one question or a comment, I understand the rationale if it happened and it still had to be approved. But I wondered, as you said, it's only for the Cobb, the Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority. If we only have the option, you know, in the future, that would be in the best interest. I mean, should we limit it to just them, or, I mean, what if we wanted to prioritize it?
No, I would most prefer not, but they won't do anything other than, I mean, that's one step ahead than where we're at now, you know? But no...
So if we found a solution that was even more advantageous than consolidating with Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority, we wouldn't have the opportunity to do that.
You would just have to talk to them, you'd have to talk to Cobb Marietta.
I didn't understand your question, what did you ask?
You're saying if it's limited strictly to them, if we found, you know, if we're adding this in interest of, you know, what's the best possible solution down the road for water delivery services, it seems to me it doesn't really get us anywhere, it kind of limits us to that, only that one option.
Well...
And if we had to negotiate.
It's an option you don't have now, and if it's not included, you won't have any option. You can't do it, they won't have anybody.
Well, that's my question. Does it have to be in the agreement that we would have certain options, or would that be something, as it came about, that we would consider at the time it was needed? Would it have to be in the agreement that we had an option?
I think it would, unless, because then you may or may not get that included in the agreement. The agreement would have to be amended then to even allow that. I mean, we weren't, no worse off. In fact, it's a step better off as far as at least it being an option, but, you know, it doesn't mandate we do anything at all.
Are we getting any pushback from Cobb County on that particular option?
I don't think so.
No, they have technically, superficially anyway, agreed. In fact, it was, you know, we asked, I asked about the, just that as an option, and they reluctantly decided to do that.
And let's be clear about what we're actually doing. The agreement says we can't sell it without offering it to them first. We're not prohibited from transferring it, we just have to offer to them first. That right of first refusal doesn't apply if the transfer is the Cherokee County Water Sewer Authority. So we do have the ability to transfer to anybody, this is just an exception to the right of first refusal.
Right, so Cobb Marietta would have the option of first right of refusal if you tried or talked to anybody else other than Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority.
And the one other thing that's a little different, I believe it's the term, I believe the one that's been signed was a continuation of the original agreement, so it's only like thirty-two or thirty-three years left, whereas this new one is a fifty-year agreement.
Right, in fact, Billy had suggested that in there in our discussion with them, absolutely.
I think those are the only two differences between the two.
Okay.
So they signed it, sent it over signed, we said, hold on...
They signed the first one without the stipulation with the...
We said, hold on, we've got two more changes, and then they will send it.
And so from a procedural standpoint, if you wanted to adopt the one that they did not sign tonight, they could consider it at their next board meeting, which is the seventeenth.
That's what they're planning on doing, anyway.
If you don't adopt it tonight and you adopt it, they likely will not move on it on the seventeenth until we send something back to them after the twentieth, does that make sense?
I didn't, I didn't get a chance to read every page, but...
It's a lot of reading.
Did we, is there anything in here about usages, uses, recreational stuff?
That's all in the reservoir management plan.
Plan, okay.
Which is a separate document.
Got it, okay.
But this document also says that the city can identify a site, right? That in here?
It does.
It's in this document, that the city can identify a site, and we can acquire that site by paying Cobb Marietta whatever they've, their cost has been involved in acquiring that.
Okay.
And that's probably not something that shouldn't be considered fairly in the near future.
I mean, my thoughts are, is that, this is just my opinion, that I'm not saying this is a good thing or a bad thing, it's just that this has just been explained to us tonight, and council has discussed it before. I feel like I need a little bit more time to kind of think about our ramifications, and again, I don't know unless we're on some really tight timeframe, which I told, we weren't before. I know we keep kicking this down the road, but with us just getting this information tonight, I, I don't know, I, again, I haven't had time to think about it and consider it. Haven't had time to think about it and consider it to know if it's good.
Yeah, the one that was.
Do you see, do you think there is, I'm not sure what could be bad about having another option that didn't obligate the city to anything. And it doesn't.
But it seems to be giving advantage to the Cherokee County Water Sewer Authority.
Oh, I can, I can tell you, it probably doesn't. I'm not even sure they would, they really want it. Hundred percent, yeah, at this point.
So if they wouldn't want it, we had it in here. Again, I'm not saying I'm against it or for it, I'm just, I. If it doesn't obligate us, I guess it doesn't obligate us, but just trying to understand the rationale clear.
There's no, there's no, no obligation there on behalf of the city. If, I, I tell you what we could do, give a little more time if you want to think about that, is that we're going to have a special call meeting in the fairly near future, I believe, to talk about development. We could add that on to that agenda and, you know, give everyone an opportunity between now and then, within the next week or so, to digest this, think about it and, uh, and have questions at that point. Or, and then we could actually act on it at that special call meeting. Could we not, Mr. Pepper?
Good. And, and, and like I said, I mean, if, if we don't approve it tonight, it's just going to delay that decision with Cobb County until July. So I mean, it's not.
Well, it, it won't if we act on it in the next week or so.
Before the seventeenth.
Before the seventeenth. But if you, if you go beyond the seventeenth, it's not the end of the world. It just means that it's probably going to be July before they entertain it and, you know, we've been working on it since.
Last August.
Going on a year.
A while, so.
Well, it's, it's, it's an important document, I got to tell you, very important document.
That would be my preference, just to have more time to digest it and ask.
Can, can you include that on a, on, on the next call meeting that we have? And, and we had some discussion day about the development and stuff, you know, and one forty and stuff like that. We could add that as another item and, and have a special call meeting in the next week or so.
Certainly seems related to development, so.
Oh, absolutely it is, yeah.
We could.
Okay. Is that, is that okay with everyone? Okay.
So I guess it could be a motion to postpone it to the next available meeting.
Well, as the agenda says, discussion and possible action, does that obligate us to action?
Okay, well then we want to act at this point. Thank you, Dan.
Is there a date on that meeting? Just out of curiosity.
What's, is there a date?
Is there a date set for that special call?
We're still coordinating schedules. Billy will work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, next item, Jones Building, that's going to take a while to, what might not, I don't know. Anybody want, Nick, you want to lead that one or, or anybody?
No, again, I, I think just, you know, my only feedback.
Go ahead.
Was, uh, just, you know, I wanted to make sure that this was kept top of mind, um, you know, just again, out of respect of feedback I was receiving from, from citizens saying, hey, what's next? What are we going to do, um, a- about it and with it? So, you know, it's just really keeping that top of mind as a discussion topic for all of us to just explore all opportunities and options.
Yeah, well, I can't, I'll get it out of my mind, to be honest with you, so it's been hanging in there pretty strongly.
I did have, I did meet with Misty Martin and there's a group going to be coming up around the thirteenth, I think Billy knows about it.
That's a velvet rope tour or something.
Yeah.
It's the name of that.
And there's going to be some developers that are going to be coming and looking at that, which, as I spoke about last time, so. That's all I know about it pretty much at this time. I think all of us will be invited, obviously, and be a part of it if we want to be.
Ms. Pepper.
Has anyone sought out the building?
Not to me. So I do have a group that's looking at the building tomorrow. Reinhardt University had called and asked if they could look at the building. Apparently they're looking for a location for a nursing school starting next year.
I did have that. I apologize. I did have a call of that.
And I, I told them I'd be happy to show them the building. Um, we had.
I think that e- even if they, if we could reach an agreement and that, it would be temporary until they could build their own.
Correct. It's not a permanent.
That's not anything permanent, I don't think.
They were looking for something like a five to seven year.
Right. And they're looking for, for something slightly large, about fifty thousand square feet.
But, um, so I'm supposed to meet with them tomorrow. Um, we had plans at First Friday to have a section of it opened up. We'll have that set up for the First Friday in July. Um, we've got everything set up to be able to do that so that the public can have access to the building. Um, so.
Would that nursing school, um, proposition require us to do a build out or would they take care of that?
I don't know yet. I think it would probably be a situation where they lease the space and the city or development authority or whoever we used on the project would use those lease revenues to secure financing to do the build out. But again, they've not seen the space and so, you know, I don't even know if that's what they really want, but.
I will mention, I was contacted and I notified Billy and the mayor that the service league had expressed an interest in having their annual event there. But at the ti- at this time, it's not in any kind of condition to have an event there. But there is interest in an event space in that building. There is a market for it. So I'll just throw that out there for everybody to know about.
Mr. Grant?
And again, I, I, I agree with keeping this top of mind. I'd rather have a plan sooner rather than later. I, I think the building is great, but the longer it kind of sits there without any use, like, it brings some concerns to me about the value or the perceived market value of it. But I do think, you know, it's our responsibility to kind of, you know, at least consider options out there. And if, if there is a public-private option, I'm not saying that would be the best one, but just whatever we could do in this velvet rope tour or the Reinhardt thing could give us some time, especially until, you know, the parking deck is built, so we actually have adequate parkage for whatever use it winds up being. But, uh, but like the, the movement we're making on it now, I think the more people that get their eyes on it, get inside the building, it includes our citizens first and foremost, that the, you know, better options we may have, so.
Yeah, I, I do think we need to look at all options actually and see which ones, I know we've got, we've got a lot of money in it right now. Plus, when you think about our, our, our fire district swap of even more than our three point two that we, we've got, uh, uh, from the, uh, restoration of the exterior. So there's a good bit of money in that building the city has essentially right now. I don't know how you quantify our swap of fire equipment and land and so forth with the county as part of that deal. I don't know how you quantify that amount, but there is a certain value there that, that, uh, we, we traded for that building.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have investments in it, certainly, and certainly our citizens have investments in it. So, and I, I personally like the idea of us approaching it as, as an asset, you know, it is, I think it is a, a great asset, so. And I think a lot of people wouldn't be interested in it if they, you know, had more information, so.
Right. It seems if we marketed it, we might get ideas. If it was on, you know, if it was, if Main Street or DDA or whoever were to go ahead and market this lovely building, you tell us what you want to use it for.
Possibility.
And let us, let us hear from somebody who might be really interested. Seems to me that we should not just sit on it, but go ahead and actively market it.
I sus- I suspect you could do that based on proposals, but I'm, I'm not sure how you would set, well, you'd have to set a price, I would assume.
Well, the city, the city can't do it. It would have to be through the DDA.
DDA. That's what I thought.
And you wouldn't necessarily have to, you wouldn't have to take any of the proposals.
Right, particular building for, for sale, for lease, for, you know, leave it pretty open.
Well, you just do a request for proposals and you, and you would have the ability to sort through them all and say, we don't like any of them.
Yeah.
So nothing binding on anybody.
The city could only do that with, by surplusing the property?
We, you, you, the city has to do it by bid, so.
That's what I'm saying. You got to surplus it first, right?
Well, you'd have to, presumably to control it, you'd do it with a contract with the DDA, like we've done with the other buildings. And let them actually do the request for proposals.
For the RFP, I mean, I mean, we're not obligated to that.
You could decide, you could say, contract with the DDA, go find a buyer with these parameters. And you can say whatever you want. They have to reserve public spaces. They, you could put the parameters on it.
I'd like to see us, you move forward with that RFP process, just while we're all looking and thinking about it. I mean, again, if it doesn't obligate us, I'd, I'd only see it as.
Yeah, if we did put these strenuous parameters.
At least it's a movement forward, so.
Well, or you could just have an, an agreement with the DDA that says we're going to jointly, jointly redevelop the property so that you go out and bring us buyers and we'll say yes or no.
Right. I think that, I think rather than just not doing anything, I'd like to see us do something pretty open-minded with that.
Okay. What's your play?
Well, what would we need to do to move forward with that process?
We, we could, I could draft up an agreement with the DDA and bring it to July.
Okay.
That sounds good.
That's, so tonight you could just.
Let me, let me, let me say one thing on that. Of course, I'm not truly in favor of that, but you know that. Um, it's no secret. But I would like to see that marketing limited to a certain amount of time. I mean, if it doesn't, if you, if it's marketed over more than six months, then let's think about something else then. Give it six months.
Let the contract last six months.
I think that's fair. I think that's fair.
And if we don't get something that's satisfactory or.
See what's out there for six months.
Absolutely.
At least it's some, some action, so.
So would you need a motion to direct you to do that or would you just? I think there were enough head nods.
Okay.
Okay.
You said you can bring that back in July.
For the July meetings.
Or this is our work session, could we have it to look at in the building?
Uh, if you tell me.
In June.
The twentieth.
I'm, I'll do what you want. Sure.
So he, he, he can bring it back, what, two weeks?
I mean, I'd, I'd have to prepare it next week to get on the agenda for the seventeenth, but.
Right. You, you can do that, can't you?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mass balloon releases. Ms. McGrew.
Thank you. It's not the best night for me to be presenting something lengthy, so please indulge me. China has tightened their standards and is buying very little of our plastic waste as they once did. Cities are stockpiling their recyclable plastics, waiting for buyers or sending it to landfills. Many of this, many cities have resorted to ending or drastically cutting their recycling programs. Per CBS News, with this in mind, America continues to manufacture single-use plastic materials, grocery bags, flatware, food takeout containers and water bottles. I'd like to commend three of the Canton downtown restaurants for using paper straws now. They're, they're going bit by bit, reducing their plastic use, and that's Downtown Kitchen, Mazato and Queenies. And some of our restaurants are even using paper takeout containers, again, shipping away at their single-use, single-use plastic containers. So I want to thank them for taking the first steps and let them know that they're leading the way. Balloons in particular pose a risk to wildlife and the environment. They kill countless animals and cause dangerous power outages. They can travel thousands of miles and pollute the most remote and pristine places. Balloons burst and return to land and see where they can be mistaken for food and be eaten by animals. Balloons not only are harming sea turtles, but they're harming all marine life and affecting the entire food chain, which eventually impacts the lives of humans. Do you know that bits of plastic is being found in our shrimp, our mussels and our oysters now? Marine animals are in fight, in the fight for their life against our pollution. A balloon in the ocean looks like a jellyfish and to a hungry turtle, it has a meal, fills up its stomach, thinks it's not hungry and then dies of starvation. The same is for whales and larger fish. Their stomachs are full, but they're starving to death. Recently, a dead whale washed up on the shore in the Philippines and had eighty pounds of plastic in its belly. If you think of something plastic, how much plastic weighs eighty pounds? Balloons are killing and maiming land animals as well. They're eating the latex, filling their bellies and starving, and the ribbons are getting wrapped around necks, beaks, legs and wings. Even horses have gotten entangled in ribbons and have been hobbled. Baby birds are being fed plastic by well-meaning parents. I'm sparing y'all the dreadful pictures tonight because we all lived through those horrible pictures of the poor horses. So I'm not going to do that to you, but I've given you some examples and you can Google this more for yourself and the stories are horrific. I want us to think about what a mass balloon release does to our environment using the examples I've stated. Mylar balloons in particular have been responsible for power outages when they become entangled in the power lines. And Mylar balloons never decompose. I won't even go into helium tonight. I'll save that for the next night and I will give you a lesson on helium. But helium is a non-renewable gas. It's, um, it's got quite an interesting story. And I'm aware that mass releases are used to honor a deceased person who is held dear by many. But I want to encourage those who would participate in such an event to think of a more lasting way to honor their loved one. To take the money that they would be, that they would be spending on a brief moment of ooh, ah, and use that to plant a tree or place a park bench somewhere in their memory. A tree would actually give back to the environment and a bench would offer a place of rest and peace for remembrance. My point is we need to do our part for the environment and disallow mass organized balloon releases in the City of Canton. Many cities and states have now banned these releases and have la- and have labeled them what they actually are. They are intentional littering. I want to ask the council to think about what our part is in the grand scheme of the environment and to take steps, take steps above and be, take steps above and beyond just participating in a recycling competition in June and July. Make this a year-round thing. I'm asking council to take the lead in Cherokee County and reduce littering via mass balloon releases. We would be the first city in Cherokee County to disallow this kind of littering. But let me be clear. This is not in any way directed at a child whose balloon slips off of their wrist. This is for the mass balloon releases that are organized, um, for commemoration purposes. And let's encourage people to plant a tree or place a park bench, to, uh, make seed bombs and, uh, seed a meadow. That is my request, that we think about, uh, disallowing mass balloon releases in City of Canton and encouraging our sister cities in our county to do the same.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm always very concerned about conservation and, and, uh, the plastics industry. I've worked in it in thirty-five years, so I know a lot about it. Um, and I, I appreciate what you just brought forward because I, I've thought about it a lot.
Thank you.
But you know what really contributes more than, than even balloons?
Cigarette butts?
No.
They do.
Well, I mean, they do. But I was just at the estuary at, uh, down in Florida, Appalachia Cola this week. And, um, your clothes, the microfibers in your clothes are all, go through that and it all goes to the river. And the river flows from here all the way down to the Appalachian coast there where all the oysters and everything else and fish are. And it's many, many more times.
That is a problem. And I was leaving out so many of the details to not take up so much time on this monumentous night of meetings. But you're right, the fibers from our polyester clothing are not captured from our, um.
Washing machines and things. But the other thing is you get, you have more plastic cups than you have anything else. And that's, we're, that's kind of a concern to mine when we're talking about doing this alcohol thing, doing it in plastic cups.
Aren't our cups biodegradable? Uh, are, are cups biodegradable for that purpose?
They're not required.
Would require that. And you're right, all of those things are, things that you said are extremely valid and on point. And so I'd like to start somewhere and have Canton do their, their part and take that step.
I don't think we should do it in plastic cups. If we're going to be environmentally correct, why should we use plastic cups?
We've got to take a step at a time.
The, the number-one plastic pollutant in the ocean is bottles.
It is.
Bottles. Straws, plastic straws are number seven. Okay. Actually, balloons aren't even on the radar as far as the amount. They're, they are a problem, no doubt, and they create some of the, some of the issues that you, you've mentioned there. But, you know, if, to me, if we were going to do something, it looks like you'd start at the most serious problem first and work down, you know, and either the bottles or the straws or something like that. That's really a massive amount. And, and your, your, your issue here is very timely because this morning on, on TV, it's not just that they have found plastic in some of the animals or many of them, it's all the animals they've tested this morning, what they said have absorbed into their systems of plastic. So, it is, it is a serious issue. And of course, we're getting plastic in us too now.
Absolutely. And I'm willing to ban all plastic if you are.
I'm, I'm for it.
I'm just trying to, you know, take one step at a time, but let's go for it.
Ban clothes, too.
Cotton. We're wearing cotton.
Polyester.
Polyester.
But it's, it's a good issue, and I think, you know, I mean, it's certainly worthy of, of discussion. I do think there's, there's some, you know, straws, for instance, that, that's something you definitely could do and have a, an even bigger impact, I think, but not to lessen the importance of, of the balloons too, but...
Could we not use paper cups when we do this thing, rather than plastic cups? I mean, you're talking about paper straws. Why, why wouldn't we look at it?
Who likes to drink beer out of a paper cup?
Well, hey, I mean, if you're gonna ban plastics, why not?
Starbucks uses a, a paper cup for their coffee that is plastic coated, but it, it's not biodegradable exactly.
Right. I've seen that, yeah. Ms. Hesse.
Ms. Sandy, is there any benchmark or, you know, if we were to move forward with this, is there already another city or something that we could already just leverage, you know, the technicalities of how they reproach it, so we could?
I don't have those cities in front of me right now, but there are many that have banned balloon releases. Clemson University has stopped doing it, and they did a huge one every year. So, yes, there are cities and states that have banned balloon releases. So, I'll definitely bring that to the next meeting.
Anyone else? Good point. Thank you. Okay. Discussion and possible action to approve mayor to sign CDBG grant resolution. I guess, Billy, you're gonna handle that.
I am. So, we are in that time of the year where Cherokee County is listing projects for community development, development block grant funding. We received notification maybe a little over a month ago about the process. Hasn't been very long. They sent to us information about the census tracts that were eligible for projects, and a group of staff sat down. The only thing about this is, if we want to be considered for the funding, we do have to approve this resolution tonight, so that's why we posted on here discussion and possible action. It's not committing us to anything, it's just allowing us to submit projects that could be reviewed as part of their funding process for the upcoming budget year. And so, the five projects that we have listed out here as it relates to those census block areas include installation of sidewalks along Harmon Circle. So, that's basically taking sidewalks from Marietta Road and taking them out Harmon Circle to connect to Harmon Field and Legion Field. There's currently none there. We discussed possible improvements to Harmon Field Park. It's in that area, so if we wanted to make improvements to any of the facilities in there, we could do that with those funds. We discussed the idea that as we're moving forward with trail on the opposite side of the river as part of the sewer project, that we might propose some funding to put in some type of pedestrian bridge to get you from Harmon Field across the river to that new trail section, just as an option. We listed in here the possible purchase of future land along that corridor for parks and recreation. And then the last one we listed is a project that would improve pedestrian safety, where we have the bridge right now across Canton Creek. There's a little sidewalk on one side of the bridge, but it's pretty high up off the road. One of the things we discussed was the possibility of working with existing right-of-way and adding a true pedestrian bridge in that area for the pedestrians to cross instead of having them walk across the existing Canton Creek Bridge that's also a vehicular bridge. Again, we're just suggesting these as possible projects. Could be that the county doesn't submit these, but we felt like these would be pedestrian improvements in that census tract that would make a benefit to the community as a whole.
So, is there any requirement on us for low, moderate-income areas?
These all meet that because they're in one of those census tracts that meets that definition. We did, just, just so you'll remember, we did utilize CDBG last year for the Brown Industrial Sidewalk Project. It was the recommendation from Mr. Hooper that, given the hurdles of using CDBG, if we were gonna use them in the future, we might consider bigger projects that have a lot more value to it than smaller projects because they tend to take more time to complete. And so, that's one of the things that we consider when putting these together.
So, the industrial part qualified for that?
It did.
That's interesting.
Does it require a match from the city?
Uh, there is a match, and it's thirty percent.
Match?
Twenty percent. Twenty-five percent.
Let, let me ask a question. If, if the industrial area there qualified, have we closed yet? Or has it, have we received the deed on that eleven acres on the other side of the river that we were getting?
At Keith Drive.
Huh?
At Keith Drive.
Yeah, Keith Drive.
Yes, we, we've closed.
We have that deed?
I'm pretty sure we've already had the closing on that because they were, everybody was, y'all voted, and we closed shortly after that, so.
Okay. Then, could we use that maybe to build a pedestrian bridge, help build a pedestrian bridge across to that property on the other side?
I don't know without having the census block maps in front of us. What we did is, we picked projects in the census tract that had the most percentage of need, so they're ranked. And so, we picked those in that Marietta Road corridor just because they fit in the highest block. Last year, when we did the Brown Industrial Sidewalk Project, it was basically the county coming to us and saying, "We have money that we need to spend on this particular type of project. Bring us one you can do and get done within a timely manner."
Okay. Ms. Grant, did we not also receive the community development grant for the Marietta Road project and study, or did I? I know we applied.
Improvements that were, first pedestrian funded through ARC and GNOT along Marietta Road.
We did an application. Is that the application we? An application to, to do the study for like the master plan extension?
Um, so, you're referring to the application through the ARC. We've had so many of them. We had the Georgia Placemaking Collaborative, which is the Marietta, Marietta Highway section that we were approved for. We did apply for an ARC technical grant as it related to the Marietta Road area and have a, and it, it won't be decided for another couple of weeks. And then we have a community project that's being led in that area by Brittany Anderson.
I, I just see these projects kind of dovetailing with those in the same area, so I think it's, and if it's available money, why wouldn't we do it soon?
Okay. Anyone else?
Any time constraints on this? Can it wait till next time?
No, this has to be approved tonight so that we can turn it...
So, it has to be approved tonight?
We have to have the resolution to the county.
Second motion.
Okay. Ms. Wilson made the motion. Mr. Yawn seconded that motion. Any other discussion?
You missed it.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, six to five, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. All right. Discussion, consideration to close the City of Canton Cemetery Fund. We'll probably get a motion on that real quick, I think. Would we? You want to discuss it?
Mr. Ingram basically is asking for the ability to close the fund just because we haven't had any activity in it in the last few years. And by keeping the fund open, he has to do certain reporting on it on an annual basis, even if there's nothing budgeted to that fund. Doesn't mean we can't spend money in the cemetery. It just means it would follow under, you know, Public Works, for instance, as opposed to being a separate fund source. So, he had recommended that. I do not think we have to have action on that tonight. It would just be done, he would do it officially, and then you would notice it in the next budget process. It would not show up as a separate fund.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Discussion of the Canton Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, some of the elected officials had asked me to bring this to the full council for discussion. The Canton Board of Zoning Appeals meets the second Tuesday of each month. They have a work session meeting that is scheduled at 5:30 and then follow that up at 6:00 by a public hearing meeting. Some of the elected officials think that the Board of Zoning Appeals probably should consider adding a second meeting so that they have some time between the work session meeting when they're presented the information and applications from the staff before making a decision after a thirty-minute work session meeting. In the package of information that the staff put together, there is a 2019 calendar. Our application deadlines are the first day of each month, and we highlighted those in yellow. The current public hearing meetings of the Board of Zoning Appeals are highlighted in blue. Those are the second Monday. Staff has looked at the thought of if council wishes the Board of Zoning Appeals to move forward with a second meeting. The fourth Monday would be a logical point to add the meeting. There's a couple of ways that we could go about addressing this situation. It would not require any type of amendment to the Unified Development Code. The language in the UDC is pretty generalized, if you will, in which it says, "The Board of Zoning Appeals shall meet as needed at a regularly scheduled date and time. This meeting will include all public hearings to be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals scheduled for the month." So, either one of these dates could serve as that regularly scheduled meeting for the public hearings. Staff's thoughts were that we might would make the fourth Monday a work session meeting and leave the public hearing at the second Monday meeting. If council is inclined to go along with that, we could go ahead and set up a work session meeting for June 24th of this month for items that were submitted for June 3rd that normally would go to Planning Commission the second Monday in July. Or, we could hold off another month, if you will, and get word out that we're gonna be changing it around, or if council wants the work session to be the second Monday. We think the work session on the fourth Monday probably would work a little better. Most folks are used to the Board of Zoning Appeals having their public hearings on that second Monday. We think it would probably create less confusion, if you will, if we kept that date for the public hearings. I'm here to answer any questions.
I think the, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
I, I just wondered, whenever, everything's submitted by the first, first Monday where you've got it highlighted in yellow?
Yes, ma'am. The first working day.
Okay. Then how soon do the members of the board get the information?
Generally, they get their information packages no less than one week in advance of the public hearing meetings. But if we add this other meeting and the work session would be the fourth Monday, staff would have three weeks to prepare technical reports, get comments from other, uh, staff departments, things of that nature, present that information to the board at the work session. Then they would come back on the following month, the second Monday, approximately two weeks later, conduct the public hearing and make a decision.
This, basically, as I say that, the same reasoning exists for that as it does for the planning commission, having two meetings a month. They meet, no public input, the first, whatever first meeting of the, would be the work session. They discuss and have the case presented to them, and then they've got two weeks to think about it and ask other questions, I guess, by the time they have the public meeting at the next meeting. It's, it concerns me a lot of times when you have a meeting, and, and, and I can tell you, sometimes there's members that may not have studied up on that, okay? And so, they may not have looked at the issue really closely. And it concerns me that they go into a meeting and may or may not have had adequate time to, to look at it and study it and make a decision that very night. And that's basically what, what we do. But, I, I mean, I think it's a good idea. Ms. Grant, you have something?
I was gonna say, having served on the, that, that body, that I think is a great idea. And I think it's also more consistent with our, you know, planning process and all, so I think it...
And they don't meet every month, do they? Do they meet every month? I don't think they do, unless an appeal has been filed.
Only when there's a action that's required.
Right. So, you haven't met every month this year, right?
No, ma'am.
I, I would suggest that you really wait that next month to get it started so that everybody kind of would be on key with doing that instead of trying to get it in June, you know? But that's just me. Anyone else? Okay. All right, so let's move along then. Discussion and a request to hear an appeal of Board of Zoning Appeals denial of stream buffer variance, case V-1904-DAS01, Mountain Reserve LLC located along Bell Street Road.
Yes, sir.
Mike, you've been here a long time, haven't you? Been waiting. I'm sorry you had to wait so long.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, in accordance with the language in our Unified Development Code, the applicant is requesting city council consider hearing an appeal of the denial of a stream buffer variance made by the Canton Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, now, it would be, this, this body will discuss this tonight, and any action on it would be at the next meeting?
At the next meeting, and then we would have to advertise for a public hearing to come in July.
Okay.
Where the public hearing would have to be the third meeting in July, instead of the work session meeting.
And remember that the work session in July is actually the second Thursday, not the first Thursday, because the first Thursday is the fourth. Fourth of July, not the fourth Thursday.
Okay, that's right. That's right. Move it one week. Okay.
Right. So, next meeting, you will vote whether to hear the appeal or not. If you decide to hear the appeal, then we'll advertise it for a public hearing, third Thursday of July.
If we have, can meet the requirements of zoning procedures, we would put it on the 11th. I'd have to count the days to see if we could conduct the public hearing on the 11th, if they make a final decision.
Depends on when you get it in the paper.
Yes.
Any questions, comments?
I wanted to ask, in the letter from Mr. Bray's office, it says that the applicant had listened to council's comments, and, and they're willing to make modifications in their request. Do we know what those modifications are, or is that what we would be listening to if we decide to hear again?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Bray would have to answer to that portion.
I think, I think everything needs to be put off to, to a public hearing.
Okay.
Because it's a quasi-judicial matter.
Okay.
So, I guess no one else has a question?
Other than about whether to take the appeal.
Under the circumstances?
Other than whether to take the appeal. That's what you're deciding, whether to even hear it or not.
Right.
You can discuss that.
But that's for discussion now, and that decision will be made
Correct.
two weeks from now.
Correct.
Okay. So, has anybody had any other questions, concerns, or anything that could be addressed to Mr. Patton here regarding that process? uh, to Mr. Patton here regarding that, uh, process? Or appeal, or questions about it, I guess? Maybe not.
Just one, just for clarification, so, we, we allow the request for an appeal, but it's not... We're not obligated.
No.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, item H, discussion of task order number two from Black and Beach for detailed design bidding and construction management services for a new water booster pump station in Laurel Canyon.
Yes, this is, uh, a result of the conceptual study that was done, um, where we looked at, at possible, um...
What's that? Interesting. Oh, yeah. Thank you. All right, continue.
Okay, um, uh, if you remember, we did a, a conceptual study to do, um, a, a booster station and possible, um, additional tank in Laurel Canyon. Black and Beach went through the study, they looked at, um, several different options and, um, the result was, um, we don't necessarily need a tank, we need a, a pump station and we need to do, um, improvements to the, um, Amos Road Pump Station. And the pump station at Laurel Canyon will provide, um, adequate pressure to some of those areas that we can't get to now because of topography and the improvements at Amos Road will allow us to provide water to that booster station when we take the Great Sky Tank down.
So, now, what was it we paid for that study that, that told us that?
Uh, what, what was that, forty thousand dollars or something? I don't, I forget exactly what that conceptual study, twenty, uh, twenty-seven thousand? I can't remember the.
Oh, okay.
Around thirty, twenty-nine.
I'm thinking it was twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand.
I can look it up real quick.
That's okay.
So, anyway, so we, we, we've, we've got this, this summary report with all the different options that were considered.
And this one's a hundred and ninety-seven? Hundred and ninety-seven for this design?
Yes, yes, this is, yeah, this is for design, bidding and construction management.
Okay.
And, and what we're, and the, the two, the two separate projects essentially, there's a new booster station, um, which will consist of three 250-gallon per minute pumps in a, um, that, that'll be enough to handle all the fire flows and then the improvements to the Amos Road, which includes a, a generator, some variable frequency drives and a couple of little things.
Anybody have any questions?
I, I, I understand the need and why we did the original study and, and all, I guess my only question is, you know, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for a task order seems high for me for a task order. I mean, is that something that we would consider bidding out or to get?
Well, that, that.
I know they did the study, but...
Yeah, I mean, they've done all the, all the legwork, um, you know, the, the...
I know we've discussed, like, previously, that someone who's done the design and the, the maintenance, uh, or the, the bidding and, and...
Yeah. The, um, estimated construction cost on this is, uh, in the vicinity of eight hundred thousand dollars.
How much is the construction cost?
About eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred and the design is two hundred thousand almost?
The design itself was, like, a hundred and fifty and then, that's, and then fifty for, for construction management.
For a project that's eight hundred thousand. That seems a little...
That's, that's a heavy percentage when you look at it, you know?
No, I, I did, I did go back to them and they, they did bring it down, the original proposal.
That task order was twenty-nine thousand nine ten, so right at thirty thousand.
So, we got roughly two hundred and twenty-five thousand tied up in it for a eight hundred thousand dollar project and you add that together, it's over a million, you got two hundred, you're about twenty percent.
Well, and, and one thing to remember about the second one is it's not just the design, it's the design, it's handling all the bidding, it's the construction management side of it, so there's additional professional costs with it aside from just the design costs.
So, they're gonna be managing the pro- project and that's incorporated within this cost?
That is correct.
The management of the project.
That is correct.
Now, is this represent a savings versus going out and finding somebody else since they've already done it?
Well, I, I believe it does and it, and the other, the other thing is, is that they've done all the modeling and they've got all the, the history, so, um, they're, they're very familiar with the system, um, you know, you'd be looking at a learning curve with, with someone else. Not to men- not to mention the, the, the time it takes to write an RFP, go through it and evaluate it and, you know, you're looking at another six months before you could be back with the same firm.
And I'm assuming from the cost, this is a very highly detailed technical project?
Oh, yeah, it's a...
It needs some serious engineering to it.
It, it's, it's a brand-new pump station, it's got, you know, mechanical equipment, it's got a generator, it's got, um, you know, a SCADA system, um, then you've got the, the other improvements at, at Amos Road that have to be done as well. And like I said, the, the whole project will allow us to do maintenance on the Great Sky Tank, which hasn't been done since it was installed in two thousand and two, I think.
And this is gonna be a lot less than it would have been if they had come back saying we needed a tank?
Yes, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess we'll look at that on the 20th.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion of probation management services, okay, everybody have a real tough question here. I've got six. Teresa?
Fitz. I'm here to discuss to y'all about the recommendation of probation. If we want to go with an intergovernment agreement with City of Holly Springs or go in-house. If we do the intergovernment agreement with Holly Springs, their probation officer would come to the city on court days and sign up the probationers. Then they would report to the City of Holly Springs for their probation visits and the City of Holly Springs would make forty dollars a person for them being on probation. But if we did the in-house probation, we would have a full-time employee at forty hours a week, their salary would be between forty and forty-five thousand dollars with benefits. They would be required to have a five-year experience as a probation officer and a bachelor's degree, but they would report to the City of Canton and we would make the forty dollars a month for that probation officer.
One thing I would note there, um, in looking at this, so right now, if we went with an intergovernmental agreement, Holly Springs has about sixty individuals on probation at any given time, we have about two hundred individuals, so, you know, from my perspective, if we're the greater of the two, it makes more sense for us to offer probation management to ourselves as opposed to have somebody else who doesn't report to us from that standpoint. Uh, we sat down and we ran some rough numbers based on, you know, having an average of two hundred at a time and it appears that the program would pay for itself, you know, ultimately, we're gonna have to house them and, and, and what have you. Uh, but it does give us the flexibility, if we are going to do in-house probation, to also do in-house supervision of community service projects and things like that, so there are some wins in there, I mean, but at the same time, we also have some things that we have to give up in that process as well. It's not that arms-length third party, but from my perspective, I, I have a little bit of heartburn when we contract with a third party to provide a service and they're not providing the service, even though the probationer is paying out of their pocket for the service, I do think we have a responsibility to those who are sentenced in our court to probation to make sure that they are receiving what they're paying for. So, you know, I, I appreciate, um, Ms. Fitz putting the information together. Really, the reason why we wanted to bring it to you tonight is, as we're working on the budgets, we need to know if this is something that you're wanting to look for at an in-house side and we can present that as an option as to next year's budget. We probably wouldn't make any change before October 1st anyways, uh, so this just allows us to factor that in. If, if it's done through an intergovernmental agreement, then it's not gonna have any impact on our budget at all, because those fees are not currently coming in-house, they won't come in-house moving forward.
Ms. McGrew?
Where would the probationer's office be?
Well, so, I have a little bit of a difference of opinion, uh, with, with Ms. Fitz, I think initially, we talked about using one offices in the back of the courtroom. I don't like the idea for that person to be separate from the rest of our staff, so that's something that we would have to look into, but I think we could, I think we could locate it there near the municipal court counter, it makes sense to have it right there in the same area. But it would be in the 151 Elizabeth Building.
I don't, I don't wanna put, put anybody on the spot, but Teresa, it seems like option B would be the one you might recommend.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was gonna ask.
What, what happens if we hire someone and then they, you know, they'll at some point leave? That, would it be, would it make sense to have as a backup the inter, inter, um, government agreement to cover that gap? I mean, I agree, I think it seems to make more sense that you'd go with option B, but then thinking through this, the scenario of someone moves on and, and takes a new job?
Well, I did speak to Mr. Logan and he said if that was to ever happen, that we could borrow their probation officer first.
Per hour.
Till we could get someone else hired to come back in.
So, we wouldn't have anybody covering their vacation or time off necessarily?
You, you know, it might be something that we could cross-train in, um, you know, I mean, there's some pretty stringent requirements that you have to have from, from a training standpoint, but, you know, it might be something that we could look into, you know, I, I look at it this way, you know, chief, for instance, talks to me a little bit occasionally about our officers and they're looking for something to do after they get to a certain age. If they meet the criteria, that's a great job for somebody to roll into, they have experience with the law, they have experience with it, so it just gives us another opportunity, um, you know. I think one of the issues that we have had is that there has been such a turnover on the, on the private side with the probation officers, it's made it very difficult for our court. I think that it'll be a little bit more steady for somebody knowing that the city's invested in a position as opposed to the private sector, which can just change out as they, as they will under a contract, so, you know, that's something that we'll have to consider as we, as we move forward, if that's the way we go on how we deal with time off, if we do have that backup, we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out.
When does our current agreement end?
It can end...
Anytime.
All we have to do is give our thirty-day notice.
It's an automatic renewal, so it's essentially year to year, but we can terminate it anytime.
End it within a month?
We can terminate it anytime.
And what we would do in that scenario is they would conti- they would continue to provide the probation management for anybody that they started with until that contract ends and we would pick up the date that contract ends with anybody new in probation management. Does that make sense?
Or we could terminate and the new probation officer could take everybody, they, we wouldn't have to continue with them at all.
We just have to make sure we have really good case notes.
Yes.
To follow.
Anyone else, uh, Mr. Grant?
Just one quick comment, I, I do really like the idea of, of having someone managing the community, community service, uh, program, having worked with several organizations that have utilized those services, say that it's loose at best, so, um, I, I think that would be a, another huge benefit of having that in, in-house, so we could really keep a closer eye on that.
Oh, yes, and they could actually tell them exactly what days they have to do community service and if they don't report, then, you know, they get carried back before the judge for compliance.
I think that'd be great, 'cause I'm, I'm not sure that it's always happening now, so...
Anyone else? Okay, so I assume we will cast that vote in two weeks. And you did a good job.
Thank you.
Very good job, thank you. Good job. Item H, discussion of truck access and restriction on City of Canton-maintained streets.
Ms. Wilson actually brought this issue to my attention, uh, last month, there was a concern from a citizen, uh, and we started looking into the situation. Apparently, uh, Cherokee County has listed a number of their maintained roadways that they have, uh, disallowed the use of through truck traffic. And so what has occurred is traffic that would normally travel west on State Route 140 and then hit East Cherokee to go north to get to, uh, to get to the landfill in Ball Ground are now going, bypassing East Cherokee, because that's a disallowed road, and hitting our North Side Cherokee Boulevard. And so the question is, we've got this additional truck traffic and so one of the things that, that, uh, the county has said is that they routinely look at their roadways and determine which roadways they don't want through truck traffic on, um, which got me to thinking, I don't know why any truck coming through the City of Canton without doing business on a local street would ever need to get on one of our locally maintained streets. They could be on State Route 140 or 20 or, uh, or on 575 to get through us. So, one of the things that we could consider is stating that we don't allow through truck traffic on any of our locally maintained streets. Still allows trucks to come in if they have business on that street, but they wouldn't be able to use it as a transportation route to get around the city, uh, for no purpose but to get from point A to point B around the city. Uh, so, Mr. Dyer and I had a brief discussion about it, Police Chief and I had a brief discussion about it. Basically, what we need to do is we would need to adopt an ordinance that lists out those streets that we do not want through truck traffic on and also, we would have to post signage about no through truck traffic on those streets to be able to enforce it. I'm not asking for action tonight, I just wanted to bring it to you as a, as a note, because that's something that we may wanna look into.
Mr. Destes?
I was just gonna say, you know, my initial concern when you're talking about is how would we enforce it, knowing that, you know, half the time, we never know if we're on a state road or a county road or a city maintained road, but I guess having the signage there would make, would make it easier to drive awareness and, and so I guess that would be helpful.
It would and, and most drivers that are delivering should have a sales ticket that says where they're going and what business they're doing and so having that information that's available to the officer will let us know if they're supposed to be in the city limits or not.
This also, I, I, and I think Billy, I discussed it with you, this, um, recently, I had a call from a, a citizen that, uh, was concerned about, uh, trucks coming down Golf Course Road and going out Longview. And I, I would assume they may be going to one of those industries out there, you know, uh, but there's a, a different way they could get there, I think, and, uh, that's probably, that road is not very good for, uh, tractor-trailer, those curvies and hills and everything. And so that would also allow us probably to do some restriction there as well, I mean, you can't just keep them from going to their place of business, certainly, but, uh, you might could, uh, have them going in in a different direction, which would be much closer from the other end.
Well, and in general, when you think about heavy trucks that are using our city streets just to move around, they do damage to our streets and curbs and sidewalks and if they don't have a purpose for being here, if we can limit that ability for them to do that damage, it's always good for our infrastructure as well.
Is the reason that North Side Cherokee Boulevard's not listed is because it's not a...
It is a city street, what you have listed are the county roads that they have...
Oh, those are the county ones, so, so, Ch- North Side Cherokee Boulevard would be one of the streets that where trucks that didn't have any business on there didn't need to be on there, right?
We could list that street since we maintain it.
That would just mean they would need to go on down along the State Route 140, down to the interchange down there at 575, rather than taking that shortcut to Agent 19.
Right, and that's what they're doing.
That's what they're doing.
They're taking that shortcut.
They're taking that shortcut, yeah, of course, I mean, it makes sense.
And it's tearing up the road.
Well, and, 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 you know, a little bit to their, uh, to their side too, GPS may be taking them there as well as the closest route to get from point A to point B.
That was the point I was going to bring up, 'cause I've know of several instances where trucks have gotten in a, in a jam and done damage because their GPS took them on some backstreet that... some backstreet that semis had no business on. And, uh, I don't know what you can do about that, you know, other than the signage saying, don't come down there.
Well, if they saw a sign that said, "No truck on this road unless you have business, they need to go back."
Yeah, and that, that's the only way to really counter that that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Google change there.
They'll have to reprogram Siri.
I think it's a good idea. Any, anyone else have any comments, thoughts? Okay.
Next item I have, um, there is a grant program through the Department of Natural Resources that came to our attention. It is a heritage grant program. As we were looking, uh, at the budget for next year, one of the capital projects that was brought forward by Mr. Scott Buckner was the need to do some work on the stained glass windows at the 151 Elizabeth Building. We've got a lot of, um, moisture issues around those windows. And so, uh, one of the things that we discussed was putting that project out to bid. Uh, and that project actually meets the projects that are eligible for the heritage grant program. So at this point, Nathan has included that as a capital project for next year's budget, but we have to move on the grant application this month. We don't have to have the resolution until after the 20th, but we wanted to make you aware of that project and what we need to do. We're asking for two options in those proposals. We've already put the project out to bid so that we can see what the cost is going to be, but the two options that we have in there are the construction of what would be basically a, a storm window system in front of those where we put a pane of solid glass to keep the moisture from coming in, the existing stained glass, or the re-glazing and, and work to preserve the stained glass that's already in there. We're going to have to do one or the other. Uh, but in this situation, all we're asking for is for you to review the application and, and authorize the mayor by resolution at the next meeting to allow us to apply for that additional state funding to go towards match on that project.
How mu, how much was the grant for?
Uh, they did not list an amount. Uh, they, what they listed is that they have given away a couple million dollars in grants over a period of time. So they don't tell us what a maximum is or what a minimum.
So it's a 50-50 match?
Um, no, it's a 60, 60-40, 60 being the state, 40 being the local.
Yeah, okay. Got any questions about that one?
On the same theme of historic preservation, uh, it's been brought up a, a few times and I wanted to bring it up for your discussion and get some, uh, get some nods of the head on this as to whether or not you want to include residential in the historic, uh, district for review by the Historic Preservation Commission. If that's something that you want to move forward with, Mr. Pat and I can work, uh, to put together a proposal to bring back to you, to amend our codes, to add residential into the HPC. He's already working on it. Uh, but we don't want to go too far into that if that's not the desire of council. So I don't necessarily know that we need a vote tonight, but I wanted to know if that's something that you want us to proceed looking into.
I know that's when we first formed the commission, that was one of the stated goals was to start with commercial and work our way to residential. So I think that's always kind of been our intent at some point, um, to do that.
I, I think we're going to have to look at that. I mean, uh, you know, it's, it's not going to be as easy as commercial, but it needs to be done, I think. Uh, because there's some historic properties here that really need, uh, residential properties that need protection. I'm sorry, Ms. Grant?
Just for clarification, are we talking about residential in the existing HPC Historic Preservation District?
So what we would do is we would bring back, we would bring back to you the process of what we need to do to include residential. Ultimately, council could say, "Take this district and expand it to include these residential areas" or just do the residential within that district. That's, that's really up to you to decide.
I think the first logical step is within the existing districts because that's where we've had some issues of people buying as residential, turning commercial or vice versa to, to avoid some of those. I'd like to at least clarify that, um, as a first step.
I agree, I need to, I think we ought to start off small in that district and it can be expanded later.
I see those as two different issues really. I mean, it's kind of the same thing, but there's an issue right now because residential are excluded in that existing district, so I think it's a bigger issue if we want to extend it.
It, it does make it very hard on our staff when an individual comes in with a historic building and they say, "We want to renovate this residential." They don't have to go through the process and yet they can turn around and convert it into commercial and haven't had to follow the same procedures that someone would have had to follow if they came in as commercial. It does create kind of a disadvantaged loophole there, uh, for the city.
I, I'm not opposed generally. I, I'm a property rights person and from the top of my head, I thought, you know, if I bought a house and I want to fix it up inside like I want to do, I don't want the city looking over my shoulder. However, I, I certainly am open to discussion and for the limited, limiting it to certain parameters of the city, so I just wanted to have that on the record that I didn't particularly know that we were going from commercial to residential.
Does it affect the interior of the house?
No, no.
Okay, so what, is only, only the exterior that, that it would affect?
Pardon?
Only the exterior of the house that it would affect, not anything on the inside, right?
Okay.
The most, I mean, paint color is going to be the thing that would most affect a residential property, otherwise they're not changing much.
Right, and we could limit some of those things, yeah. But like I said, I'm open to discussion.
And, and really the only thing that would come into play with interior is if they were applying for certain tax credit programs through the state or federal government.
Okay.
And that would not fall under us anyways.
But if they wanted to replace the windows, they'd have to come, right?
They would have to come. Anything changes the appearance.
There are, there are certain things that we already administratively approve that we consider to be routine maintenance related things, uh, which we would still do for the residential. Um, you know, if, if say you were going from a slate roof to a, to an asphalt shingle roof, that would require a review by the HPC.
Okay. Let's see, next one, right-of-way encroachment application process.
We had a, we had an interesting issue come up, um, a couple of weeks ago. Bethany Watson had a conversation with me about it and so we tried to put together a process in our minds. So in the Whispering Woods neighborhood, uh, when it was first developed, there was a homeowners association and covenants, okay? None of that exists anymore, so it's really just a traditional neighborhood, no covenants, what have you. Um, so a gentleman came to the city and he said, "I have a 12-foot driveway and I would like to expand my driveway so that I can get my bigger vehicle in the driveway without running off into the yard. Uh, what do I need to do?" Well, the city's driveway permit allows for a 25-foot driveway. The problem is if he wants to install a driveway, he's going to have to do work within the right-of-way to install said driveway. And so Bethany and I were kind of communicating with this back and forth and we think that it was the desire of council to be able, to, to allow individuals to have a 25-foot driveway so long as they met, you know, the requirements for a driveway. And as long as the homeowners association, which now doesn't exist in Whispering Woods, doesn't have anything that prohibits that, the man probably should be able to put in his driveway. We don't have a process necessarily for that. And so what we did is we put together kind of a template for what we call an encroachment agreement and application. Um, and so if you look at the actual application, what, what Bethany has tried to do is think about other particular issues where a residential property would need to do work or maintenance within the right-of-way as part of their property. So for instance, if I'm installing an electric fence because I have a dog and I want to keep the dog within a certain area, I might encroach on the right-of-way with that electric fence, particularly if I'm in the neighborhood where I'm already maintaining that portion of the right-of-way. Under this process, all they would need to do is come in and fill out an application so we know that they've done that work within the right-of-way and follow the procedure that's laid out in it. And it would be dealt with administratively as opposed to having each one of these issues come before council as part of an overall agreement. Walkways were one where you've got a situation where, you know, there's a public sidewalk and the individual may not have a, a walkway from the front door to the sidewalk, they'd like to install one. They can certainly do that, but they may encroach on the right-of-way where they connect. And so we've tried to add that in there as well. She's also listed in here, um, a couple of things that, um, that could be required based on the project and there's, I mean, there's a, a full list of those responsibilities and regulations. I'm not asking for any action on this tonight, I just wanted to bring this to you as an idea. I think there's a lot of these things that we could deal with administratively instead of having to bring them before council or any other body, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to ask one question you brought up there about covenants. I was under the understanding some time ago that covenants expired after 20 years. I've been told more recently that Georgia law changed a few years ago that says covenants do not expire unless the homeowners actually, uh, vote to eliminate those.
I think that's right. The, the legislature in the 90s went back and forth on that. For a while it was they automatically expired unless you renewed them.
Right.
But I think the, I think the final settled on, uh, they, if you have renewals in the covenants, then it has to be stopped.
Okay. Anyone else have a question, Ms. Grant?
Uh, you, you said the city allows driveways of 25 feet. Is it 25 feet or 20 feet? It's 25. I was confused.
I, I believe 25 was the number Bethany gave me. I can go back and check that to be sure.
Just, just wondering. And I guess the other thing is, is, and I agree we should have process for it and administrative is, is fine. Um, what are the, the criteria though, that the department would be using to, is it just a subjective criteria or, I mean, if we granted someone to do what they wanted to in the right-of-way, could we stop, you know, the neighbor from doing the same thing?
So in this situation, what we would be doing is we would be looking at our existing code and what's allowed. Um, and they would be able to do those things that are allowed with the understanding that where they encroach in the right-of-way, the city always has the ability to come in, a utility may have the ability to come in and disrupt that as part of their routine business and it will be the responsibility of that property owner to fix whatever was disrupted which was in the right-of-way. So where we allow walkways, for instance, they'll still have to meet all of our requirements on a walkway or a sidewalk, or they'll have to meet our requirements on a driveway as it relates to drainage around the driveway and whether there's a culvert there or whether it's, you know, uh, what the grade is and what have you. They'll have to meet everything that's existing in the code. They just won't have to come and ask for special permission from council to do that work within the right-of-way that they're already allowed to do in the code, but not allowed to do in the right-of, most of it's al, already done in neighborhoods before the city accepts the maintenance of the right-of-way. In this instance, it's where somebody's coming back to us to ask to do something where we've already accepted that right-of-way and it gives them a process to do that.
Anyone else?
Okay. Uh, I do have a couple of other things I wanted to bring before you. One thing I want to mention to you, um, of course, Mr. Ingram's not here tonight, uh, we are, we're prepared to deliver the budget to council for you to review for 2020. One of the things I wanted to lay out for you is the process on the millage rate, for instance. So we're required in the state of Georgia, if we hold the millage rate steady or do anything above a revenue neutral rollback, to advertise at least three times. Um, right now, we have to have our millage rate adopted by the end of July to be able to turn that into the county since the county tax commissioner collects our tax bills for us. So if we were only to utilize the public meetings that you've already adopted, so the 20th, the 11th and the 18th, I believe, of July, we would have to advertise the millage rate tomorrow to be able to have the first public hearing on the 20th. I'm not saying we have to do that. I'm just letting you know that's kind of the worst-case scenario if you just use those meetings. At this point, what we've prepared in a budget doesn't have us going above what the current millage rate is of 5.4. So the worst-case scenario is unless y'all make substantial increases in the budget, we would not be going above what the current millage rate is. We would still have to meet those three hearings. We could, if you wanted to, go ahead and advertise at 5.4, knowing we're not going to go beyond it. And if we rolled back or did anything below 5.4, we would already be covered by what we've noticed to the paper and in advertising. That's one option. I'm not asking you to do anything tonight, I'm just trying to lay that timeline out for you. What, what hits us is that our notices to the paper, they, of course, the newspaper's changed its publishing dates over the last few years, so we're kind of in a rock and hard place sometimes on getting them the ads in time to be able to run it. We also have to have the ad to the paper a week and a day before you discuss it in a public meeting. And so that's just something that I'm trying to put in your heads. What Nathan and I had talked about was trying to get a date set up in the next two weeks for that first budget meeting, uh, be able to deliver you the budget. We are supposed to notify the papers when we deliver the budget to you and so that's kind of the process that I wanted to let you know about and get your opinion on, you know, do you want to do the three hearings that, the three dates that we already have established? We can do three hearings in July, that's fine too, we'll just have to add a special called meeting. Uh, the only restriction that we have on special called meetings is that when we do have one, if we have, we have to do three if you hold steady or don't do anything besides the revenue neutral rollback. If you do three, you can do two on the same day provided that one occurs before lunch and one occurs after. Uh, so a lot of restrictions.
What is, what is the net MNO digest after exemptions?
I think we calculated that we could roll back to, hold on, um, we could do a rollback based on the digest that was presented to us, um, to 5.126 mills. We're currently at 5.4 mills. If we did the full rollback on the current, it would be 5.126 mills. Um, that, that doesn't of course take in effect any appeals that might occur during that time as well, but that would be the effective rollback based upon the current digest as presented to us as a draft digest from the assessor's office. So what we've said is 2017, 2018 were both 5.4. That would be the worst-case scenario moving in, moving into the next budget year would be 5.4. It could be better, but it won't be worse than that unless of course y'all want to add projects to the budget or change things in the budget that might raise the amount of spending.
So I guess my question was really what percentage increase is there in the tax digest?
The gross digest in 2018 was, uh, 1.1 billion dollars, 1.194, so almost 1.2 billion dollars. The gross digest in 2019 was 1.32 billion dollars, so you have about a hundred and, um, that's about 126 million dollars in increase, gross digest.
The gross digest. So what's the net after exemption?
The net digest was 990 million in 2018. Uh, the draft digest is 1.096 billion, so it's an increase of about, um, is that a million dollars, a little less than a hundred million dollars between 2018, 2019. And I believe when we looked at it, about half of that increase was, uh, reassessments and the other half was new development. Okay? Anyone else, Ms. Grant?
I was going to say, of course, we have our work to do and our interest is always to have the lowest millage rate possible, uh, but I also think that the opportunity to have the three hearings, our three, next three meetings, to me, is a more... the three hearings, our three, uh, next three meetings, to me is a more, um, opportunities for public input. Um, I know we had special called meetings last year, we had one in the morning and one in the afternoon, and they were sparsely attended, uh, and I think people find it hard to, you know, attend a meeting, you know, during the day especially if they're, but, um, that's just thought, I always think that more opportunities for public input is better than, than limiting that or, or creating more challenges than we have to, but no it requires, would, would require action, but, uh, that was just one thought that I had, so.
Nick? Just going back to the, kind of the layman's terms of millage rates again, so if we held flat at the tax digest, it would take it, the millage rate down to 5.126?
That's correct. If you, if you took the digest and the growth in the digest and you calculated that revenue neutral amount, you're not gaining any revenues, you would roll your millage rate back to 5.126.
And we have the, I don't want to say right, but in lieu of a better word, but we can keep it flat, which then would allow more revenues to be collected and then ultimately utilized, and that's kind of the difference.
Well, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of a counter logic that the state uses. They assume that, you know, the increase in your digest, you should be able to operate at the same revenues year to year. But everybody also understands that the cost of electricity, insurance, uh, healthcare, you have costs that go up every year too as everything inflates. And so, you know, they almost want you to advertise that we can operate at the same amount of money last year without any changes, um, at a different millage rate. You know? But also when you have additional residents move in, that's when you also have to think about, is it time to add another police officer to the force? Uh, you know? In our situation, we have additional houses that come on the market, the digest goes up, we also have to pay additional funding to the county for fire services based off of that growth as well, so.
Does the proposed budget include any use of water and sewer funds to balance the need?
I think the last draft we had, had about $800,000 coming from fund balance that we think we'll have at the end of the year. And another, I think it was at the time about a half million dollars of water and sewer fund utilized almost in a contingency nature. So, you know, we put money in the budget every year for contingency. If we don't use it, it stays in the fund balance. What we talked about was using water and sewer funds to cover the contingency, if we don't use it, it stays in the water and sewer fund.
So are you saying that the budget is reflecting around $800,000 from water and sewer?
No, $800,000 in fund balance that we think we'll have gained in the general fund at the close of this year where revenues coming into the city exceeded expenditures.
Okay, so how much is a, a line item budget from the water department?
I believe it's about a half million. I'll go back and pull that number for you and be, and be able to email it to you, along with a copy of the budget.
To me, that, that would make a difference as to whether or not what we did with the millage rate, too.
So, so the other side of the coin is we don't have to adopt a budget until the first meeting in September, but we have to adopt the millage rate in July. And so, you know, we get a little bit, we get a little bit better feel on the budget on what we're going to have in fund balance, the closer we get to the end of the fiscal year.
You know, that's always puzzle makers, that's really sort of backwards.
It is backwards.
It's totally backwards. You, I mean, how can you adopt a millage rate before you know what your budget is? I mean, I don't know how that works.
Well, and the, the other part about it is the way we do tax collections now with the county collecting them in November instead of December, you know, we would be backing our process up a month anyways, even if we were doing our own collections, because we would want to collect at the same time that the county's collecting theirs so that we get paid close to the same time, so, yeah.
What's that? Anyone else?
So the question is, do you want us to go ahead and advertise at a 5.4 and have a first public hearing at the 20th, knowing that would be the worst case scenario so that we've at least started the process? Or do you want us to hold off, which we can do, we just have to advertise a week and a day before the meeting? Does that make sense?
You wouldn't be adopting that.
It ends up being almost two weeks ahead of time that we have to provide it to the paper to be able to meet the notice. So if you had your first meeting on July 11th, we would have to provide all of that information to the newspaper by the end of June to meet the deadline for the first public hearing on the 11th. And we'd have to have another hearing on the 18th. And if you wanted to do two hearings on the 18th, you could, or you'd have to have another hearing after the 18th if you kept the millage rate, anything above a revenue neutral.
So, uh, you can advertise a worst case scenario and then weeks later the public may read something that's totally inaccurate. Would that be right?
No, I mean, I think you'd be putting out there that you're doing 5.4, you could always back it off.
But would you not have to re-advertise that you had, this is the, this is actually what it is? Instead of, we did five, we just put 5.4 out there so we thought we could do better, but we're, we're not going to tell you what we're doing. I mean, when, when does the people actually see that?
Well, so there's, there's two different processes going on, and, and really the question is just, do you want to go ahead and use your existing meetings just in case? Otherwise you do what you did, was it last year where we ended up doing, you're scrambling in July. But there's two different processes. You also have a, one of those hearings is our required budget hearing. So where you would tell the public, here's the proposed millage rate that we're actually going to vote on. As long as that's revenue neutral, you don't have to do these other hearings. But I think the answer to your question is, the intent obviously is that you hear from the public and then you might change your mind. So ultimately that's what it's for. You're putting out a millage rate as long as it's not going to go up.
So, so if we advertised a 5.4 and then council decided to raise it to 5.6, we'd have to start the process all over again.
Start over, right.
If you advertise at a 5.4 and you're able to cut it to a 5.36 or a 5.26 or whatever, you don't have to start the process all over again because you've already advertised a rate that's higher and, and taken public input on that.
You know, we ought to always do that, jack it way up high and it'll scare people to death, and then we come back and just reduce it a little bit and they're happy.
It's, it's just about doing these hearings. I mean, it, you can do, sure, but I mean, this hearing schedule is very unworkable to try to do it by July. That's, that's.
And that, that is mandated by whom?
That's the county.
What did we do last year?
The county wants it early because then they have to turn into the state, they get it all approved by October or.
Since our, since our tax collections are on the county tax bill, we have to be turned in with the county tax bill to the state to be reviewed at the same time. If we were doing our own collections, we could push it out a little bit further, but not that much further.
We'd, you'd be talking about September, I think, rather than August.
Did we, did we advertise a worst case scenario last year and?
No, you got, you got into discussions and then we realized you were going to increase it and we had hearings.
And we had to advertise that rate.
So you're scrambling. That's when you do, start doing, let's do two in one day.
Do the hearings, right.
Right. Which you can do, I mean, we worked it out.
But in this scenario, we don't expect to propose anything above what the current millage rate is. And so if we advertise what the current millage rate is, we could go ahead and start the process and hear from the public, and you can always reduce it as part of the process.
Okay. It sounds like that's the only option we have.
It's not the only option. I mean, you can.
You could, you would have to decide by the first meeting in July, and unfortunately that's now put off a week. So, because you could, at that meeting you'd have to sort of have an idea what your millage rate was going to be, so that we could advertise, you'd probably have to do a called meeting. But, but you could do it because you just have to give a week's notice.
Like I said, I don't think we have an option, I don't think we could do that.
But you don't really know what you want the millage rate to be in, so you end up with this problem of you're just kind of throwing a number out.
Yeah.
Well, if you advertise 5.4, we're not committing ourselves, we're not setting the millage rate to that.
Right, we're not, we're not adopting one, we're just putting one out.
The advertisement will say you're proposing that. Understand that. It will say.
But we're not adopting.
What, what it basically says is you're proposing that you would keep it the same.
Proposing is better than promoting.
And that might, that might increase taxes, but you're having public hearings to discuss that as part of the budget process.
Well, it increases revenue.
You say proposing or, proposing or promoting?
Proposing. You, the advertisement says we are considering doing 5.4 millage rate. I think we can put in there that that's not an increase in the millage rate, but it increases revenue. So the state law requires all these extra hearings because the revenue's increasing.
In a positive light, yeah.
But, back to my original point, it, it, if our objective is really to hear from the public on the millage rate, I think the best thing to do is our next three meetings when we have opportunity for, have more public here, uh, in attendance and, you know. It's confusing to us and it's confusing the public. I think it only helps inform the public what the process is and why we have to do this. I mean.
So what are you saying? What are you saying? Tell, tell me exactly.
I think we should advertise tomorrow and do the next, next three meetings instead of having other called meetings.
Going ahead and using the city council meetings as the hearing days.
So you want to go ahead and advertise it at 5.4, is that?
Not me personally, but, but I, I think that's the best thing to do.
You could decide tonight to do 5.2. I mean, you, it's just, he's just saying 5.4 is the worst case scenario.
Anything you do about 5.126 require a notice of, of certain period of time.
And three here, and three meetings, right.
In three meetings.
And we advertised last year, we had the notice last year, correct?
Yes.
Well, we were deeper into the process.
We did.
I, I support.
And then, you know, I mean, last year, again, we, we had the special meetings, we had, I recall having one at council meeting at least, or maybe that was the budget hearing, but we really didn't have a whole lot of input from the public.
Well, the law actually requires one of them to be during the day. You have to have one during the day.
I just think that'd be the simplest thing.
For people who can work at night can come to that and they have, and one of them has to be at night, so.
I think complicating it more with special on call meetings is unnecessary.
Yeah, one of the meetings has to be after 6:00 so that you can allow people who work.
But doesn't one have to be before 6:00 too?
No, I think it's on, right.
Only if it's the same day.
You can't have one at 5:00 and then turn around and have one at 6:00. You have to have one before lunchtime and then one in the evening.
Okay. We didn't have that much input last year, did we?
Not from the public.
Nobody, nobody.
And let's, and I'm not saying you have to act on it tonight, I just want to, i- if, if you want to use the next meeting as a hearing, you do have to act on it tonight. I'm just trying to get it in front of you that there's timetables and so, you know, you could if you wanted to decide to have a special meeting in the next week. It sounds like there's some folks that want to do that and look at the budget at that meeting and figure out what you want to do as an initial rate. It just may mean that we're not able to have that first public hearing on the 20th, the first public hearing wouldn't likely be on the 11th, which means if you hold that rate and it's above the rollback, you're going to have to either do two on the 18th or have one on the 18th and later on in the month of July.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote to do that? To advertise 5.4?
If, if you want to advertise 5.4, I think you should vote to, to run the ad.
Eh, even though that wasn't on our agenda, the public weren't, wasn't aware that we'd be voting on a millage rate.
My preference would be that you just have to deal with it in July and you wait till the 20th now that you know it's an issue and you think about it, because otherwise we're going to get into a lot of, you're going to, I mean, I know it's convenient to use the city council meetings, but really you hadn't even thought about the millage rate until right this second, so.
I'm okay with waiting.
It just means cramming a meeting in somewhere.
I don't mind cramming in a meeting.
Oh, I know. I understand that. Anyone else have a comment or anything? Is it, okay, just to wait and move forward in the three meetings, starting with the next meeting?
Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay.
That's fine. Not to labor you further, but I have a couple more items. Service delivery strategy. So as you know, uh, we have a firm that's representing us in that process. The firm had reached out to Cherokee County to see if we could set up a mediation date in June. Cherokee County couldn't be available in June for mediation date. They have asked for a date in July. They have also proposed that during that timeframe, if the cities would agree to file for an extension with the Department of Community Affairs to let us adopt our current service delivery until at least October while we're in that mediation process. The county has already signed that document. The initial document they sent to us had the wrong county commissioner name on it, but they got it fixed. And so now we have the right document with the right county commission chair, uh, who actually lives in Cherokee County as opposed to Newton County, but we have the right document. In speaking with the other cities, we would be the first city that's gotten this, but in speaking to the other cities, what I would suggest is that council would authorize the mayor to sign this only when the county has agreed to a date for mediation. Because I don't think it's in our best interest to sign something and then have the can kicked down to September or October before it's discussed again.
And kicking the can down the road.
But in that instance, I would ask for action from the council and not authorize the mayor to be able to sign that once that mediation date is in place.
Any thoughts?
We agree to the extension provided the county is willing to come to mediation with.
Actually have a date set.
Have a.
Have a date set in July.
Right. And they have agreed to, um, have Justice, uh, former Justice Fletcher be the mediator on the case, and he's provided some dates in July and I think the 1st of August that both parties are looking at right now.
I believe who the county indicated a week or two ago that there's no way they could get it in in June, and that's the reason for the extension, right?
That's right.
So moved.
Second?
I'm good.
We probably need to amend the agenda so that the, we know exactly what, so move to the, so my motion to move, to amend the agenda to add the service delivery strategy extension, I mean, the service delivery agreement extension.
So moved.
Is that what you said?
Yes, just.
Okay. Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Deon signed the motion. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, no? Okay.
So then the motion would be to allow the mayor to sign the extension. Don't, doesn't everybody have to sign it? Is it just the mayor's?
Um, so under the law, the city of Canton, Holly Springs.
No, the council members don't sign it, it's just the mayor.
No, just the mayor. But not all the cities have to sign.
Right, so the motion would be to, um, allow the mayor to sign provided the county has agreed to a date certain for mediation.
And that date certain would be in July or August? Or are we just going to say date certain?
Uh, no, July or August, I mean, yeah, there's no reason.
Hopefully it will be more than that.
Because, well, that was my concern with the extension is, well, if we just wait and just start talking in October, how's that doing?
Yeah.
So.
So moved. Second?
Grant made the motion, Mr. Deon signed the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, no? All members voting for the motion.
There will be a kickoff meeting with Clark Patterson Lee on the parking deck on June 18th. I believe that's a staff level meeting and we're going to establish timeframes for public input meetings as part of that design process. The only other thing I have, uh, there's a resolution on your desk, um, that we will be adding to the agenda for the next meeting. We had discussed with the elections, uh, office in moving our precinct from 151 Elizabeth Street, it's upstairs and what, what is now Police Department area, into this building, uh, for future voting. But we have to have a resolution of council approving that movement of the precinct, and we need to get it done this month so that everything's in place, they can mail out new precinct cards to everybody letting, we did do a site visit with elections, let them look at the space. We did a cross-reference of their election dates and the use dates of this room to make sure we didn't have any conflicts there, uh, and I know, uh, Ms. Fortner's been working with Ms. Stansel on it. So I wanted to show you that resolution, uh, and let you know that we'd be adding it to the next agenda for your, uh, consideration. And that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, I've got about four items here that, uh, no, no, there isn't. The only thing I wanted to mention is there's, uh, basically somewhat questionable, but there's two openings on the Historic Preservation Commission, and, uh, I would like to nominate a couple of people that, uh, I know have, uh, a history here, so to speak, in, in the city and, and, and are very familiar with the buildings and historical aspects here and been very active in historical preservation for a long, long time. Neil Galt McGruder and William Teasley, Bill Teasley. Both of them are, uh, very familiar with the properties here and, uh, you know, eh- Both of them are, uh, very familiar with the properties here and, uh, you know, that's basically what.
Bill Kent?
Teasley.
Bill Teasley, okay.
Bill Teasley.
Okay.
Okay.